Almost at October of December 12th, 2006, to order, will you please stand to say the pledge of allegiance with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Barnwell.
Here.
Falcone.
Here.
Horton.
Here.
House.
Schneider.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Mayor Blum.
Here.
Item number one, please.
Item number one, United States Environmental Protection Agency presentation of the State Revolving Fund Project of the Year Award for Sheffield.
Okay, oh, Kathy, go ahead.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Taylor. I am the city's water system manager, and it's a great pleasure that I am here speaking with you today, as I have represented us from the United States Environmental Protection Agency and also the California Department of Health Services, and they are here today to present us with an award for the Sheffield Water Quality Project. It is the recipient of the 2006 California Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Project of the Year.
That's good.
We all should be very proud of that. As you know, it was a $22 million project. Twenty million of it was funded with a state revolving fund loan. And so I will first give you an oversight of the project for those of you who are not familiar with it from the beginning, and then we will hear from Kurt Souza, and he is the Southern California Section Chief of the California Health Services Drinking Water Program, and we should be really grateful for Mr. Souza because he worked very closely with this project to ensure that we were in compliance with the state loan and we got the $20 million. And he is very, very familiar with the project. And after that, we will hear from Stephen Woods. He is the Safe Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Section up in Sacramento, and he will talk about the SRF program, and he will be followed by Corinne Lai, and she is the Drinking Water Manager, I'm sorry, her title is actually the Manager of Drinking Water Office for the EPA's Section Nine. And we had the opportunity to spend the morning with these three individuals, and we went up to the Sheffield side and gave them a tour, and I think I can safely say that they were impressed with the final project. And Corinne confided in me that it is the first time she's ever been in a buried reservoir. So, the former Sheffield reservoir was, had a 40 million gallon capacity. It was an open-air reservoir, and it could no longer meet the upcoming water quality standards that were prescribed by the EPA. We had to hit it with a lot of extra chlorine, and that caused the additional tri-helamethanes to form, and they were lowering the limits for the allowable tri-helamethane levels. Additionally, this open-air reservoir was open to airborne contaminants, and it was also a security risk. So we spent much time thinking what we were going to do to meet the upcoming regulations. Part of the complexity of this project is how many different stakeholders we had, and I have a list up here of just of the few who were very involved in the project and had vested interest in what the outcome of the final project was. Particularly, the ones who had particular interest were the neighbors, they were very involved in it, and the city departments include Water Resources, the Fire and Police Departments, the Parks and Recreation Department, and we had created an open-space ad hoc committee, and on that committee, thirteen members, three who were from the neighborhood. And after that, we'd of course had City Council, the Boards and Commissions, and then a list of many state and federal agencies who also were involved with making this project happen. I think what the greatest success of all this is having all this input and working collaboratively is, I think we found a project that best met the needs of everyone.
Mm-hmm.
It's not perfect for everybody, but I think for the most part met our needs. And the project took ten years from the initial concept to the final completion. So initially, when we were talking about all the various sites we could have, could be on, or the various options, and whittling that down through the environmental impact report, and then through the design, and through the final two years of construction. And I must say that it was a big project. This is a picture of the construction during, when they were doing the concrete buried reservoirs. If you go out on site right now, you cannot, no longer see those concrete reservoirs. They are buried, but I must thank the neighbors for putting up with all the commotion and disruption that they had for the two years during construction. And this is what it looks like today. We had a very nice dedication ceremony a couple months ago, and the plants are being established. The site is now open to the public. We are asking that they stay off the trails and out of the planted areas and stay on the perimeter road during the establishment period, but they're very welcome to come to the site and walk their dogs. The police are back on site with their canine dogs, and the Fire Department has their fire staging area, and their fire hydrants are set up, and the project has been formally transferred over to the Parks and Recreation Department for maintenance of the planted area. So now, we will hear first from Kurt Souza with our local Department of Health Services.
Okay, Mr. Souza, time.
Good afternoon. My name is Kurt Souza. I am the Southern California Section Chief of the California Department of Health Services Drinking Water Program. The Drinking Water Program is a state agency that regulates drinking water systems. We inspect and permit all drinking water facilities under our jurisdiction, and the city of Santa Barbara is one of those systems. My district office is located in Carpentaria. In the late 1990s, a federal program, the State Revolving Fund or the SRF program, allowed the Drinking Water Program to finance water system infrastructure improvements. The city of Santa Barbara applied for an SRF loan for the Sheffield reservoir project. The Sheffield reservoir was an open-air, treated-water distribution reservoir. Water from the reservoir was only chlorinated prior to being delivered to the consumers. The drinking water while in the open-air reservoir is exposed to windblown debris, birds, small animals, and the only security for the drinking water reservoir at that time was a chain-link fence. The water, the water leaving the Sheffield reservoir was heavily chlorinated to kill the bacteria, but caused high disinfection byproducts to be formed. For the city to comply with all future standards, which by now have been promulgated since the start of this, the city decided to replace the existing reservoir. An invitation to submit an application for the funding was sent to the city in 1999. A complete application was submitted to my office in May 2000 to secure the $20 million low-interest loan. A funding agreement was signed by the city in 2003, and construction was just completed in 2006. I nominated the city's Sheffield reservoir project for the EPA's SRF award for numerous reasons. The project serves as an example of an innovative and effective use of the SRF financing. The project promotes sustainable infrastructure for the city's long-term goals of reliability of service, for pure, safe, and wholesome potable water for its consumers at all times. The project corrected a serious health and security hazard. The city worked with various groups and homeowners on the final project that created a beautiful 20-acre open-space park for the Santa Barbara community. I'd like to thank the city staff and all their consultants for the hard work and patience to complete the application, the technical evaluation, all the environmental documents in order to secure the $20 million loan. It was a pleasure to work with them, and congratulations.
Well, thank you for nominating us. It's very nice.
Now we'll hear from Stephen Woods.
Mr. Woods?
Hello, my name is Steve Woods. I'm the Section Chief of the State Revolving Fund Program. I work out of headquarters up in Sacramento, and we're the bankers in Sacramento. We provide infrastructure financing for drinking water facilities throughout the state of California. As with all programs, there's a lot of requirements, and a lot of what we do up in Sacramento is work with Kurt and the other folks around the state, and getting projects around the state onto our project priority list. And there's a lot of steps in the process. As we all know, it takes time and effort, and all of these projects are unique and have aspects that we have to consider and see how they fit into our eligibility requirements. Kurt nominated these projects along with other projects from around the state, and we're glad that this particular project won, and based on what Kurt was saying, this project definitely merited the award. I might add that this is the first year of the award. We had an award, it was a state award last year, which was the first award from US EPA, and this was the first water system award.
And that's great.
To be congratulated. The financing for State Revolving Fund comes from a capitalization grant from US EPA. We've been, this program is fairly new. It started in the late 1970s, and we're up to $578 million of State Revolving Fund financing for projects, and that totals to about 107 contracts with water systems around the state. And those water systems range from very small mobile home parks up to major metropolitan water systems, including, of course, here. Kurt also informed me this morning that there's about $70 million of SRF funds in the Santa Barbara community. So we've been a supporter, and through the efforts of you folks locally and all of the partners that Kathy mentioned in her slide, it takes a cooperative effort, and we're glad to be part of that effort in providing those funds. And I thank you for having us here today, and also for the tour that Kathy and Steve gave us this morning.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Corinne Lai from the EPA. You're welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Blum and Santa Barbara City Councilmembers. I'm happy to be here to celebrate the partnership between the federal government, the state government, and city government to honor the city of Santa Barbara with the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Sustainability Protection of Public Health Award. Since the inception or the creation of the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, we've been able to provide funding to finance innovative projects that increase the sustainability of drinking water infrastructure nationwide, resulting in far-reaching environmental benefits, safer drinking water, and improved local economies. The Drinking Water SRF Fund not only provides below-market rates for recipients to be able to make infrastructure improvements affordable, but it's also one piece and one tool that the agency uses to promote infrastructure sustainability, and our four pillars are better management, which are keys to improved efficiency and performance, it's full-cost pricing to ensure that recipients have the, recover the cost for operating, maintaining, and providing affordable drinking water, water efficiency, which is something that everybody strives for, for water conservation, and lastly, watershed management strategies in looking at watersheds, decisions, and looking at the various stakeholders. I'm very pleased here today to be able to recognize the city of Santa Barbara's effort in its innovation for receiving this outstanding award, demonstrating the financial integrity in addressing a high public health need here. The city of Santa Barbara's water quality project is an example of leadership and innovation in financing, planning, project implementation, creative use of partnerships, and promoting sustainable infrastructure, and I'm honored to be able to present to the city this award for its outstanding effort, and I think I will just hand it over to Kathy.
Kathy.
You have in front of you an eight-and-a-half by 11 that maps out, you are one of 29 recipients across the nation. In addition to that eight-and-a-half by 11, I will also leave with you a large poster that has the city of Santa Barbara on there.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
I think we're the only one in California, so that feels very good. Thank you. And there's the poster. Thank you. Kathy, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, it's wonderful. Congratulations to Kathy and to the entire Public Works Department, and Steve Mack and Tony Nisagis here. It's been, it was a huge project, but a very rewarding one, because when we look at that, I can't wait until the trees grow, and it just, it's going to really blossom out there just beautifully. It already looks better than it did, but it's going to look wonderful, so. Anybody else? Thank you very much, we appreciate it, and thanks for nominating us. It's very nice. Thanks. Okay, we do like awards. We do, somebody just said, we like these. Thanks. Changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, item number six is going to be removed. We're going to do some more work with that contractor and see if we can negotiate a little better deal.
Okay, so if we vote on the consent calendar, we won't vote on that one. Item six. It's the Mission Canyon Road Water Main Project. Okay. Public comment? Oh, we have Lee Muldaver, who probably was for that. No, this is for public comment. Okay. We were chatting about the Sheffield, you know, award, so I didn't know. There you go. Mr. Muldaver.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, there was a council, I'm Lee Muldaver, speaking as a private citizen, and I think today's award not only represents good city staff teamwork at its best, but it also points a finger on something that's escaped public notice when they think about effective community and government management, and that is that, very quietly, a gentleman who doesn't speak at these meetings very often just received his five-year pin anonymously, and I think that that was by his wish, but I think it was inappropriate. If you look and talk to your colleagues at the California League of Cities, or CSAC, the California Association of State County Governments, or you look at the statistics from the Local Governments Commission in California, the life expectancy of a public administrator in county or municipal government tends to be limited, kind of like a coach of a sports franchise. And the city of Santa Barbara in 30 years has had only three administrators, and I think it's a great mark of achievement, especially since our current one began in the depths of a serious recession, that projects like the one for which you've just received a national and state award were able to come about. And as a private citizen, I certainly don't understand everything that's going on in the administrator's office, but I think the fact that so many things are going well, especially when money was short, is an indication that five years of service certainly needs recognition on a wider front. So I would like to recognize and thank, as a local resident, Jim Armstrong for five years of really hard work. And I would also like to point out, as I'm sure Councilwoman Falcone was going to do, that in the same sense, a coach or a leader of a team is only as good as the personnel and the players that they have working for them, and tomorrow, you're all going to be invited out near Bonnet Park for the dedication of another one of these really excellent public works projects, which is going to limit pollution and filtration in old and new Mission Creek. And the person who put together a lot of details for the ribbon-cutting and the reception, who's been the right arm, I think, of Jill Zachary for a number of years, is a woman that most people in the community have never heard of, named Jenny Eddington, who's the Chief Administrative Officer for the Creeks and Water Program. And unfortunately, the lure of another job in Hawaii seems to be indicating-
How can we compete, huh?
Seems to be indicating that this is going to be the last two weeks of community service for Jenny Eddington. And in my experience, she's the kind of person that anyone in public or private or nonprofit sector would want to have help running an office, and I think she represents the kind of quality and dedication, not just that Jill Zachary and his council relies on, but the kind of talent that's allowed Mr. Armstrong to be so successful in these five years. So I'd want to take this opportunity not only to thank Mr. Armstrong, but also to thank Ms. Eddington for her number of years of stellar service to the city of Santa Barbara. I know our environment is a lot cleaner and better managed because she was there behind the cameras, doing a lot of hard work, and I know as one member of the Creeks Committee, I certainly shall miss her. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for letting us know that. Yay, Jim. Yeah. Okay, councilmember committee assignment reports. Mr. Horton?
Last week was, last week was another one of those weeks. We dedicated the 100th anniversary of the train station. A number of us, a number of us were there, and we enjoyed having the train come in, the Amtrak, and learned that this Amtrak line is one of the busiest in the country and growing all the time, which is great because it gets people off the freeway. Last week, we, we had a meeting with Hap Freund of Channel 17 to talk about election reform issues and to talk about possibility of getting future candidates on, on his TV channel. I think that's a positive step. A number of us went to the Board of Realtors Awards and the 2007 installation luncheon of, of the new officers, and the mayor presented an award at that meeting. And then finally, last night was one of the most rewarding events of the year, which is the annual Police Activities League family holiday season dinner with all the kids running around and the families there and the service line, and the place was full of happy and cheerful people.
And good food. Mr. House and Mr. Williams were there also. It was very good. Okay, Ms. Snyder?
Thank you. Just keep on going on all the holiday party hopping. Thursday, there were five that I went to, and I think I missed two or three, so that was pretty incredible. One was at the Falding Hotel, just to help them trim their tree, which, when you have about 40 people out at once doing it, didn't take very long, but very warm feeling there, and I appreciated being there. And if you haven't, the lobby there is tremendously improved. The city's put in a lot of funding to the Falding Hotel with new electrical and windows, but also the lobby got a remodel, and it just looks great, and it shows a lot of, you know, displays respect to the residents there. Also, Thursday was the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce holiday party up on the mesa by, and you're going to have to remind me which spa that was.
Marabella.
Marabella, thank you. And great, great fun, and they had more raffle prizes than I think I've ever seen at an event, and that was fun handing those out. On Friday, as liaison to the City Arts Advisory Committee, I attended the County Arts Commission event at the Channing Peak Gallery to honor Susan Rose and all her years of supporting the arts in public places and, and the County Arts Commission, and she says she's not going away. She's still going to be involved in promoting art and public funding for art. So that was a really nice event. And then finally, on Sunday, a number of us were at the harbor for the Parade of Lights, which it cleared up. It was actually a beautiful night, and the beginning, we didn't think many people would show up at Sterns Wharf to watch, but by the time the parade was over and the fireworks were completed, it was quite full. And I want to also acknowledge Captain Don, who was the emcee and had to tally all the results of the judging, and also Steve Heislop at the Endless Summer, which is where the post-party occurred, and people take this judging very seriously. It's pretty amazing.
It's hard.
But it was a lot of fun to be a judge. Kind of hard, but, you know, to, but it was year 21, which is coming of age, and, and there were a lot of trees growing, and 21 candles on a boat, and a lot of cheering, so, but always, always a fun event. Thank you.
That's nice. Ms. Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse my voice, I have a touch of something, but it's better than it's been in a number of days. And the judging is fun. I've done it a couple of years, and it's a treat to go down there, do that. Last week, amongst all these festivities, I party-hopped out of town, actually. I went to the National League of Cities Annual Semi-Annual Convention, and that was held in Reno, Nevada, from Wednesday through Saturday. There were well over 3,500 elected officials from all over the country. It's extraordinary to sit and talk and meet and discuss a variety of topics with folks from absolutely every corner of this country, big cities, small cities, rich cities, poor cities. It's, it's a treat. I really enjoy it, and we do this twice a year. We had many spirited debates on issues such as immigration, the use of tasers, the cost to transport nuclear waste to Yucca Mountain, who gets to pay for that? I was hoping with the last 25 years I've been one of the people fighting against this project, but it looks like it may actually go forward, so we need to make sure our cities are safe when this stuff is transported through the various cities. We took a position at our annual meeting to strengthen our statements and our positions on global warming. We interface with the federal government on all these issues that affect the cities, and we're going to be encouraging the federal government, particularly now with the reconfiguration of the Congress, to adopt new policies to nationally reduce greenhouse gases, encourage tax incentives for pro-energy-efficient development and, and industry, to re-categorize really solar and other renewables into no longer being considered alternative, but more mainstream. There are a whole host of resolutions, a lot of information in my office for anybody who's interested. This is a booklet that just says all the, many, many different programs that are available. I know Mr. Williams was there for some of it as well, and Reno was beautiful, Lake Tahoe was even more beautiful, and Virginia City was a lot of fun. So, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
At that same meeting, I got a chance to attend some pretty interesting workshops on, on city finance, on mass transit programs, some real successes happening in some of the most unlikely of places like Phoenix, Arizona. And the, really, one of the, one of the things that was intriguing to me is some of the grants that are coming out, FAA grants that are coming out, that I brought back some information for our airport director. And the, I have to say, it's the first time I ever did the Parade of Lights. I didn't judge because I didn't want to go there, but the, but it was a lot, a lot of fun. If you're, you know, lived here for, for many years like I have, but have never gone to the Parade of Lights, next time, next year, you have to go to it. And last night, the Police Activities League, Madam Mayor, served up food. I got to go behind the scenes in the kitchen and tear up turkeys with our police officers to bring out. There's 25 of them. It was a little bit messy, but, but a fun job to do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. House?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. It really was a busy week. It's amazing. Start with business. Last week on Wednesday, as the Liaison to the Sign Committee, I was there, and they, at the beginning, an issue came up that had already gone by Sign Committee, and they were concerned about the design of the informational sign, or signs that may end up on Highway 101, and they've asked for a little bit more time on that issue on December 19th, so we're going to take that up at the beginning of the meeting. And I'm reminded of the work that we put into the Highway 101 Design Guidelines that was part of our Local Coastal Plan Amendment, and an outgrowth of that. So we take these things very seriously here in Santa Barbara, and we'll have a little bit more of a discussion on that. That same day, Granada Theater Donor Appreciation Dinner, Sarah Norman McKeon provided that for folks who participated, and there were some of us there. Mr. Horton was there, and we, and Mr. Barnwell, I think, as well, and we had quite a nice evening. One of the things that came out of that, that I would like to report, though, is I had the chance to sit next to the Outreach and Educational Director, and I was having discussions with some of the folks there, and the opportunities to, to have some of the kids in our neighborhoods on the east and west side to join in, you know, to participate in the capital A arts, you know, to be part of that world, just seems like too rich of an opportunity to pass up. So I intend to follow through on that as time goes on. We've had a great week for having rain stop just in the nick of time, and it must be our mayor showing up, because when she does, the rain has stopped twice, once for the Parade of Lights, which was just reported, the other was for the Milpus Street Holiday Parade, the 55th Annual, and it was wonderful. I just want to, once again, we did this last week, but acknowledged Bob Ludwig and the Milpus Association, the Boys and Girls Club, who took this on, and the bands, the police were out there, and it was raining, and everybody hung in there tight, and it stopped just as the parade started, and all those little kids, just too cool. On the Parade of Lights, I do want to appreciate our staff, Mick Cronin and John Brightley and the volunteers and the folks that came out from our staff that night, and all the way to the harbor crew on the boats out there to make sure nobody ran aground, because it was low tide right next to the, in the shallows there next to the wharf. But it was just tremendous fun and a great way to profile and have our community experience just, just goodness. The last thing I just want to say is that not only being with the families at the PAL event, how cool that was, but Santa Claus came. And I actually haven't seen Santa Claus in person for a long time. It was the coolest thing, and there were little kids, they were all excited and everything, and I mean, but nobody could have been more excited than me. It was wonderful. And they gave out presents to all these kids and stuff. It was just super. So let's hear it for the Police Department and how great that program is.
Absolutely wonderful.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How old is Santa Claus? He's got to be pretty old, doesn't he? Because he hasn't aged a bit since I used to go see him.
He spoke Spanish very well, too.
Did he? Well, he speaks everything, doesn't he?
Right. I think so.
He can speak Honolulu, and he can speak gnome and all that stuff. The Milpus Parade, I just wanted to acknowledge the UCSB soccer team, which was, and I also want to acknowledge my esteemed colleague, Mr. Grant House, who was the parade grand marshal, and he drove in a kind of a cool, old-timey car.
1930 Chrysler in the rumble seat.
In the rumble seat. It was very good. The soccer team was there, they were throwing out autographed soccer balls, and my young son caught one, and I told him to hang on, but it's probably going to be worth hundreds of dollars here in a few years. I wanted to acknowledge the library staff. They had a, they had a, a late luncheon, early dinner on Saturday. dinner on Saturday for all of the volunteers who work for the library and it's one of these groups that makes Santa Barbara so great. You go into the Faulkner Gallery, which we've all been into before, and it is literally packed wall-to-wall, there's more than a hundred people in there, the people who help the downtrodden to be able to learn English and get a good job and disabled people who are being assisted and all the volunteers and the food was delicious and you just never know about that stuff unless you go. And I just wanted to acknowledge the library staff for having done such a great job. The, also, we had our employee art show last week and I was honored to be a judge along with Mr. Paul Casey, who really needs to hone his skills because I think he made some serious mistakes in judgment there, but he had a whole different set of tastes than I did. But it was really fun to taste all that food and to see all that, see all the good art, so thanks to the employees for doing that. And then the Sustainability Subcommittee of the Council met last week and I just wanted to let everyone know that the City of Santa Barbara is moving at a great pace to become completely in all regards sustainable. We, whenever we have our little luncheons in the back room now, everything is recyclable or compostable and we're establishing the database of all the energy that we now consume so that in sometime in January, we expect to have a public report on all the energy that we consume in terms of gas and electrical, what our recycling is like and we'll use that as a base data to begin to chop into it and to head it down so that we use less and less and our footprint on the earth is increasingly smaller and smaller. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, lots of parties, but the only one thing you guys didn't say, oh no, somebody talked about UCSB men's soccer, that's right, they were at the parade, but they also had a very good rally on Saturday out at UCSB, so I was glad to represent the city out there and I forgot how much fun college students can be, especially when they just win a national championship, so that was really a lot of fun.
Now, Madam Mayor, I heard an urban myth that they tore down the goalpost at Hardest Stadium.
That's what they said they did.
And they walked it to the shore in Isla Vista and they tossed it into the surf, did that really happen?
Well, I think a whole bunch of them were so jazzed, they started running down the street and then another bunch of them came from the other direction and so where would you go if you both came together?
Yeah.
They went to the soccer stadium and grabbed the goalposts even though the game wasn't there.
And then threw it in the ocean, which is not pollution, I don't think, is it?
Well, you know, Chancellor Yang was there, so we adults couldn't laugh too much, but, you know, because that really wasn't a terrific thing to do. But, but anyway, college students are a lot of fun and I was glad to represent us out there. Okay, now we gotta get down to business. Consent calendar, no, yeah, yeah, sorry, I turned the page. Consent calendar, I think you have something to read, Brenda, by title only.
Item number three, update of Conflict of Interest Code Resolution, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara adopting the Conflict of Interest Code of the City of Santa Barbara to incorporate by reference the Fair Political Practices Commission's Model Code and rescinding Resolution Number Zero Four dash Zero Nine Five. And item number nine, certification of the election results of the official canvas for the special municipal election of November seven, two thousand and six, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara certifying the election results of the official canvas for the special municipal election held in the city on November seven, two thousand and six.
Okay, that was reading by title only, without objection, we'll waive further reading. Does anybody have anything they'd like to take off?
Number eight, please.
Number eight, okay. Anybody else? Mr. Williams?
That was the same one I was.
Okay, number eight, will you go ahead and read the title?
Item number eight, approval of MAP and execution of agreements for Three Zero Nine Ladera Street.
Okay. Ms. Schneider?
Yeah, thank you. I don't need to vote on this separately, I see Mr. Casey in the audience and I apologize for not giving you a heads up, but I meant to send an email earlier. This is about a conversion from apartment units to condos and I've just noticed in the last several weeks in the consent calendar, a pattern of seeing these more than usual and I don't know if it's just sort of the way business is working or, but I guess just in light of the conversations we've had in the last several months regarding rental housing and trying to protect it, I guess I'd like to know what's coming down the pipeline. I know we're gonna have some policy-related discussions with the Housing Steering Policy Committee and what other things the City Council can do to help preserve rental housing, but I just keep seeing each week something on the consent calendar about a MAP agreement and conversions to condos and just wanna know what trends are coming up and it doesn't have to be right now, you don't have to answer it right now, but I, I guess I'd like to see in a memo form or email what, what we should see in the next few months if we're gonna keep seeing these twosies and threesies and foursies coming up because it's just trickling away the number of rental housing units we have and it's a bit of a concern. So, I don't need to vote on this separately today, but I just wanted to bring it up since I saw it again.
No, it's a good idea, two and three units start adding up after a while, so you're right. Okay, Mr. Horton?
To move consent, minus the item that Mr. Armstrong reviewed.
Minus ninety-six, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Very good. Report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Horton?
Yes, the Finance Committee met today at one o'clock and we looked at a proposed new records management system for the Police and Fire Departments. We had a time of thorough questioning and examination of the financials and other matters and we recommended this item for approval to the full council.
Okay, thank you. Item number thirteen, Brenda?
Item number thirteen, annual report for Looking Good Santa Barbara Committee.
Okay. Item number thirteen. For those of you who are here for Veronica Meadows, just to let you know, we have this and then we have a Water Supply Management Report, I don't know, the whole thing will take about twenty minutes maybe, maybe a little more, and then we're going to go into a very brief closed session. It's, all of this gives you a little time to go get a Starbucks if you want to or whatever because it's probably gonna be, we'll take a brief break before Veronica Meadows, so I would say another probably thirty-five, forty minutes, but you might find this all fascinating and wanna stay here and that's fine, that works. So, Mr. Nisich, and congratulations on being President of the Public Works Directors now in California, that's really wonderful.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll share you with them for a year, right?
Gives me a chance to help plan the annual program in Sacramento, so.
That's good. We're looking for great things from you, Mr. Nisich.
Infrastructure is our number one.
That's good.
Public Works is everywhere.
That's right.
Anyway, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, my name is Tony Nisich, the City's Public Works Director. The first item we have today for you is, besides our award, which we were very happy to receive, is our annual Looking Good Santa Barbara Report. As the council knows, the Looking Good Santa Barbara is a program that exists within our Environmental Services Section of our Water Resource Division of the Public Works Department and here to talk about today will be Lorraine Cruz-Carpenter, our Executive Coordinator, Stephen McIntosh will help run the report, he's our Environmental Section Supervisor and Mr. Mack is here as well, so. As the council will probably remember, this program was established in nineteen eighty-nine as a kind of a grassroots program. It's designed really to keep the community clean and the focus on those things in the community, graffiti and trash and litter and those kinds of things. Recently, in the last few years, we focused increasingly on recycling and those kinds of benefits as well. The program has an advisory group, which hopefully Lorraine will go through for you and I saw a couple of members in the audience and she'll talk a little bit about those. I'd like to just kind of introduce Lorraine, who's, who's been our program Executive Director now for about four years. She came out of city service before that, but she's been working really hard to expand the various programs. It's one of the most exciting things I think we do in the department, we have a chance and Lorraine gets to do this, to really organize the community, she'll tell you about our successes and working with hundreds of volunteers and I think those of us in public service really appreciate the opportunity to work with volunteers, particularly when they come forward, but it doesn't happen by itself. There's a lot of effort behind the scenes, as you all know, to make those volunteers work and be productive and Lorraine does an excellent job doing that and she'll talk a little bit about the successes we've had this year. So with that, Lorraine?
Okay, Lorraine?
Good afternoon, Mayor Bloom and Councilmembers, thank you for having us here. I first wanna acknowledge the Looking Good Committee members that are in our audience here and that would be Rich Block with the Santa Barbara Zoo and Pam Weber with the Santa Barbara Hotel Group and Rich has been on for a couple of years and Pam has been with us since the beginning of this program, since nineteen eighty-nine, so many thanks to her for her support. First, I wanna start off with our Spirit of Service Awards and many of you have been to that program, this is gonna be our third year of the program. Last year was obviously our second annual and what we did last year was we actually opened up the nominations to the general public and we were able to get a lot more nominations and see, find out about people working behind the scenes that we wouldn't normally know about. I meet a lot of people doing this job and I know a lot of the key players, but it unveiled a lot of people and that's kind of what this, this program is about, finding out about people working hard to keep our city clean. We had twelve award winners and some of the categories we have, just so you know, are Outstanding Neighbor for Litter and Recycling, these, all, we have a category in litter and graffiti abatement and then in recycling for all these categories, so it would be Outstanding Business or Student in Educational Program or Instructor, Law Enforcement, and we also acknowledge staff people in a public agency and that could be anybody in the city or it could be a Caltrans worker, county worker, anybody who's doing extraordinary work that's helping us in this formula to keep things clean and sustainable. So, also, I just wanted to recognize Living Green, the local company here, they, it's a retail business for recycled material products and they provided centerpieces for us at our event and our goal for this is just to get people thinking about how they can incorporate recycled materials into their everyday life. The items we show in this last picture here are actual building materials for your home, so it showed tiles and, and woods that can be used in your home and everything's made out of a recycled product, so it's really nice and we appreciate their support. The next item would be Community Cleanups and as you'll see, a lot of these programs that we have, we haven't changed it up too much this year, what I've been trying to do is just make the programs that we have stronger and build them and increase them and get more membership into some of the projects that we have and build the volunteer base. So, you'll be familiar with some of these things and as you know, we came, I think, last month and we thanked the church groups we had, so I, I know you have some understanding of, of the cleanups, but we had total fifteen community cleanups last year and that was a total of eight hundred and eighteen volunteers and I'd just like to note that that is also, we do, volunteers are based out of adults and then we have a lot of groups that are students and they do a fundraiser with us, so they can come and do a three-hour cleanup and they do a lot of hard work, we make them work hard. They'll aid us in things, let's say Streets gets a call and a resident is calling about some trash or litter that needs to be picked up and they can't pick it up, we'll make a special schedule that weekend and we'll go out and attend to that area, so it's really aiding staff in the things they may not be able to get to in, in a regular work week and we use the SWAP crews, which are the Sheriff's Work Alternative Program, to aid in the things that maybe the volunteers can't do alone, they might do the heavier work and then the volunteers will come behind them and maybe pick up and bag litter, but it's a good way for students to earn money and they, they're guaranteed, they know what amount they're gonna make at the end of the day and it goes back to the kids and it really, a lot of them, it helps them buy uniforms, go on trips and aid, aid them in their activities. Let's see, oh, so the other thing I wanted to note is the total number of hours, which is really impressive, is two thousand four hundred and fifty-four hours of work, so a combined, that's a lot of manpower and a lot of time that, you know, might be up, done by staff and, and that's money we don't have to pay anybody out and it's free labor, so it works out really nice and we're able to do a lot of projects. The fourth annual community cleanup is what we kind of talked about with the church groups and we had four hundred and three volunteers, we ran that in August and it seems like that's becoming the annual time, August, and we hope to get that workforce back again this year. We covered eighty-one city blocks, that's a lot of blocks, it's a lot of work and what we've tried to do is really expand the cleanups and I've tried to increase the types of tasks we're doing. One thing we did was we worked with Creeks this year and we were able to restore two Creek locations with those volunteers, so we're more than happy to share our volunteers once we get a big pool of them. We've tried to contact other departments through the Neighborhood Improvement Task Force and invite them to be part of it, so my goal is to make it a city event, you know, when we have it, we're happy to share them. Sometimes it's hard to come up with work for that many people, so we share them and it, it's been really successful. We picked up a total of thirty-one point zero seven tons of waste, so that includes recyclables, pure trash, green waste and we also, in expansion of those cleanups, we also provided seven courtesy dumpsters to the community and we did it on the east side, so it worked out really great, people called, they were very happy to get those dumpsters and I know neighbors work together, so let's say somebody had some things they needed to be dumped and they didn't have a truck, they might've been elderly, I know of people that were working with their neighbors to pick up those items and take them over. We did have a little bit of a learning curve with the dumpsters and we'll probably operate that a little bit differently next year, but overall, it really worked out great and aided the community in getting rid of that trash and also, the second goal of that was to try and decrease illegal dumping, so, I mean, those items may have just ended up on the street anyway, so it's nice to have the dumpsters and do it in a coordinated Some of you may not know, but Looking Good also oversees what we call litter-free events and that's a requirement for events that are on city streets. Parks and Recreation has requirements when you have an event in a park or a beach and many of our special events are in a park and a beach, but many, as you know, are on State Street or like the Christmas Parade on Milpus Street. And before, they didn't have a requirement on what they had to have in terms of trash and recycling like they did in the parks and beaches. So, Looking Good oversees that requirement, what we do is we send out the paperwork, we work with the coordinators to make sure they have sufficient trash and recycling containers. We do hold a deposit and we just make sure that they have a cleanup plan, so once that event's done, it goes back to normal operation for the public. Currently, there's approximately six events that fall under these litter-free event requirements and it really complements the work that we're doing overall to reduce waste and divert waste, so we're trying to incorporate that into our events that the public is seeing and get that recycling sign out there and get people to recognize it and make it part of their everyday life even when they go to an event. The Adopt a Block program, many of you know about that already and I did bring a kit, I forgot to bring it up here, but if anybody's interested, I have a kit and you can see what's in there.
This Weber has it behind you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
What the program is, is we, Looking Good provides this kit and has free supplies for graffiti removal, we also give litter pickup tools, we also give trash bags, gloves, anything to aid people who are interested in helping us keep their, their neighborhood block clean. They make a one-year commitment to the program and they can go out anytime they want, we don't have any set rules for anybody, we're just happy to get volunteers and people that are interested in helping out. Everything's free, if they call up, we'll, I'll come to your house and drop off a kit to you. And this year, we got this new kit that you just saw and what's nice about this kit is that it has a product that the street staff is using, so we're really trying to be consistent in the way we're removing graffiti. The remover is actually called the world's best graffiti remover and city staff really does think it's the world's best because what it does is for smaller surfaces, it, it removes your graffiti, but it doesn't remove the paint, so it keeps the surface looking original. So if you were to go around town, you're not gonna see a bunch of patchwork from painting out things, so that's the direction street staff and Looking Good has been moving towards. If you have a larger, like if you had a wall full of graffiti, it would be a lot more economic to actually paint that out, but for our volunteers who aren't doing that type of work, this product has been really key and we also have another remover that complements this one and it's for removing graffiti on brick and stone, so if residents have a particular problem with that, they can request that product and we'll give it to them, but we give out a general product in that kit. And then my goal this year has been to really try and increase And then my goal this year has been to really try and increase the membership in the Adopt a Block program. In September, we had a meet and greet event and I know some council members came out to that, basically inviting the public out to come see our graffiti truck, talk to our staff, talk about the issues, see how the remover works. They get a hands-on experience there. We had Starbucks for everybody. So I was hoping that would entice them to come out. But it was just really nice to, we had a group of people come out and these were really committed people and it was nice to give them that product, to find out who's out there and just keep on building and support people in their efforts that they're already doing at home. In May of this year, we were able to work with 15 residents throughout the city to install new trash and recycling cans. And these are, I was told, called the Paseo cans this afternoon. So those, we installed 21 Paseo cans throughout the city. And it was kind of nice because as you know, these cans are pretty expensive, so we don't normally have an excess of cans. So we had a little list and we were able to accommodate all those requests for trash cans. So these are people who really care about their neighborhood. They called, they were very persistent, you know, they wanted to see those cans in their neighborhood and we were able to help them out. It was nice to actually go out, talk to the neighbors, find out what's happening. This is another way for us to promote the Adopt a Block because obviously the people who care about getting a can in are also open to getting involved in the Adopt a Block program. And then just finding out and letting them have an ownership to tell us where they want the can. They thought, you know, we walked around the neighborhood with them and had a one-on-one conversation. So it was really nice to be able to accommodate those requests and get those cans out there for them. In September, also, Looking Good Santa Barbara was honored to be selected for the Santa Barbara Beautiful Jacarando Award for Community Service. And basically, it was for doing, keeping the city beautified and clean and doing all the projects and we were just honored for that. And we work closely, it's a complimentary program to Santa Barbara Beautiful. Many times, people confuse us, as I almost did right now. But Santa Barbara Beautiful does a lot of beautification projects with trees and so our program is a complimentary piece to that. And we were just honored to be selected. So as you know, we've been working, I've been working for the past four years a lot on graffiti. That takes up a lot of the Looking Good time and it's, there's been a lot of positive things that have come out of it. We continue to work with the street staff on responding to residents. I may get a call in and then I have to call Streets and we kind of work together to make sure that everything's responded to and taken care of in a timely manner. So on an ongoing basis, that's kind of what a lot of my job is focused on, is actually working with Streets and doing, making a lot of teamwork to make sure things are done and responded to. This last year, what we did was, in working with Streets, we decided to do what we called kind of a Phase Two. After a year of having our ordinance in place and then also having our increased staffing and our graffiti truck in place, we thought it was a time to actually review and say, okay, what's going great about this program? Maybe where are some holes? How can we improve it? Are we meeting the goals that we thought we would? And are we meeting our timeframe, the three-day turnaround period? And how is it working with the private property and how are we, how's that all panning out? So what we did was, we just talked over what was happening. We spoke with Georgia, who is running the graffiti truck. And we found that they are meeting the three-day goals. She has a log on that and I think Browning's here and if we have any further questions on that, he could speak to it. But we also just wanted to see how we can better coordinate as a city. I know, if you know, when you call into the graffiti hotline, the number goes over to Streets. And so they've kind of overseen the whole program and had the hands-on with the hotline and all the issues. But there's a lot of other sections within the city that aren't, they're also doing graffiti cleanup and they're not necessarily the first link to it. So what we wanted to do was make sure everybody was kind of on the same page. We coordinated a meeting with all the maintenance people that deal with graffiti and we wanted to see, you know, are you cleaning it up within the three days? Is that happening? How do you log it? Do you have your own log? Because once, once we report it to you, we're expecting that it's cleaned up within the three days like Streets is doing. And we found out that that is happening. We shared the product, which we are trying to get in central stores if it's not already there, which is available to all of our maintenance departments. So it's really nice because now, a lot of people didn't know about it and they were really impressed with the product and they saw the potential for use. And now, it's kind of, it's a coordinated effort between our crews. And everybody was kind of able to talk to each other and figure out who's doing what in what section. And a lot of times, if you know, that's where things kind of fall between the cracks as if, you know, you've got several people doing something and that you don't have that shared information. So that was kind of the goal of our meeting. In addition, we also met with community development and asked them if there's a possibility to have a requirement within their permits on graffiti and what the removal time was. So after speaking with staff there, they did ensure us that they have added a section on their permits for the, any projects that go before Planning Commission and their staff hearing officer have the requirement that it has to be removed within the three days. So that's really great because that's a key piece. If you go around town, you'll notice a lot of this graffiti is on construction sites. And before, we didn't have that and it's hard to get somebody to remove it if there's no teeth behind it. So that, we're very thankful to the community development staff for getting that turned around really quickly. And then, as I said before, the other element to graffiti was increasing that membership in the Adopt a Block and we continue to make those efforts. Then there's just a couple items for the future that I wanted to mention, which are really exciting projects for us. We've been asked by the Santa Barbara Botanic Garden to provide volunteers for a, what they're calling, it's called the Re Leaf Project. And it's a grant project that I believe will be started in the spring and it'll be doing some tree plantings. So it's a really nice thing for us to be able to provide this to our volunteers. We do a lot of cleanup, as you know, but our, we're also, we would also like to move towards getting those beautification projects done. And so since cleanup takes a lot of our time, it's nice to be able to have this element and offer that. Volunteers love this kind of work. And so I have a lot of people that are already interested in that project. And then the second one is that, a project we're doing with Santa Barbara High School. And it's their ROP, it's a virtual enterprise class and I think some of you know about it. And these kids are really incredible. If you have a chance to meet them, I recommend it. But they run a business out of their class and they are interested in incorporating ethics and environmental ethics into their class. And what they want to do is, everything they do, they want to operate with recycling and being sustainable. And with that, they want to start a recycling program at their school. So we've already started discussion with them and we just think it's a really exciting project since the kids are behind it and they're the ones who had the idea and they were, they were calling us and they want to start it. So we hope to see that happen really soon in the beginning of the new year. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, you've been very busy. It's been good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnwell.
I just wanted to let everybody know about the graffiti hotline number.
Oh, good idea. You've done this before.
It's 897-2513, correct?
Correct.
Right. And to review the process again, if someone sees some graffiti, they call it in. It's our standard procedure to respond within three days to paint it off unless there's some unique circumstance associated with that property. Is that right?
That's right. And if people keep in mind that sometimes there are some circumstances, you know, it may be on a second story or something that's really unsafe for staff or it may be, you know, near a freeway or something that they have to go when they have to close down a street. So just if people can keep that in mind, but I know they are making their best attempt to get it done within three days and for the most part, it is.
Oh, yes. They are. Georgia and the crew there are doing an outstanding job. And then the other thing is the creeks with graffiti and the creek bottom, we don't respond as quickly to that because it's other governmental agencies, but we're working on a process with the county and relationships with the county so that we can get that done as well. So, and then that's a, that happens to be a very public place for graffiti and I don't want anybody to think that we're not working diligently on that to find a way to constantly maintain the creek so they don't become a site for graffiti either. But thank you for all your good work. And the number again is 897-2513. Put it in your cell phone.
That's good. I've seen a lot less graffiti since Georgia's been doing this full-time. She's, she's really wonderful.
She is. Everybody loves her and we're happy to have her. And our volunteers are working a lot. We're trying to put them on projects to go around and remove all those small tags you've seen because she's really on top of all the big things that might normally stick out.
Well, but part of it is she's so good at the big things that they're making them smaller and smaller. You know, just to try to get away with something.
Exactly.
Yeah, we do have to stop that too. Okay, Mr. Williams and then Mr. House.
Well, I've been very pleased with the Adopt a Block program. It's a great thing for people to take it to their own hands and get their own kit. And I call them graffiti vigilantes, that people can become graffiti vigilantes through the city and Looking Good Santa Barbara. And I need another kit because I'm giving them away sometimes to folks who come by to ask for.
Okay, great. I'll leave a couple for you.
Thank you. Mr. House?
Okay, I want one too.
I'm happy to give them away.
It'll be kind of fun to get out there. We're already willing, eager to do this. You do all this with the $80,000, $40,000 from each of the, from BFI or from what's called Allied Waste Industries and Mark Board? All that's done within that budget?
Well, not necessarily. A lot of the work we do for the fundraising efforts, some of those come out of different budgets. Like the Streets budget pays for some of the fundraising and the cleanup efforts that, because it aids the Street staff and it's a street cleanup that's done. And I'll let Stephen talk to the other part of the budget and what comes out of it because he oversees that.
Okay, Mr. McIntosh.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, we have a $90,000 budget line in the Saw Waste Fund, but you are correct in that $80,000 comes from both the haulers or, from the haulers in total, 40 from each. But we do have funding available from the Streets Division as well for the kids that care of cleanups. Those, children's groups actually come in and clean up a section of sidewalk or street and as Lorraine was saying, it is a benefit to the Streets Division. So there's, there's some funding available to those groups.
I see. I was just trying to get some idea of the value of all of this volunteer participation and it's just pretty incredible. And you were saying 403 volunteers participated in a cleanup effort on the east side, which is incredible. I saw that going on, 81 city blocks and 31.07 tons of waste.
Yeah, the thing, you know, to wrap your mind around is if you had staff doing that work, what does that equal? It's, it's very valuable and also valuable to the volunteers that are learning from this and the kids that they bring to learn. That's, that's the bigger positive there is, is what the kids are learning from this.
Well, that's, the invaluable part is what you see in terms of community empowerment. And in that particular, in that case, a lot of that has to do with sort of wrecking, gang hideout kind of stuff, you know, and some of those little areas around the creeks and stuff that are so crummy. And thank you very much for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it and we appreciate hearing about it, so thanks. Okay, item number 14, please.
Item number 14, Annual Water Supply Management Report.
Okay. Mr. Nisich.
Yes, Mayor. This item is our Annual Water Supply Management Report. As the council is aware, every year, as part of our long-term water management plan, we do a bunch of things. At the end of the water year, which Mr. Ferguson will talk about, we go through and we make a list of how we've done on those things. And that's what this report does. It provides an opportunity to the council to discuss it. Prior to this, we do distribute the report to others in the community and ask for comments and that's kind of an ongoing thing. And we get those comments, we then bring them here. We also have a hearing in front of the Water Commission, which we have done, and they have approved this report. Mr. Bill Ferguson, our Water Resources Supervisor, will give the report and Mr. Mack is also here if you have any questions.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is our annual report to you. We used to do them weekly during the last major drought, but we think annually is enough these days, just to keep you posted on what's happening with our city water supply. We want to review what's happened in the past water year ending September 30th and note that this is compliance with certain annual reporting requirements that we have related to our water supply. Big thing that's been going on for a long time is this decision that's still pending before the State Water Resources Control Board on the Kachuma Rights Hearing. It's been several years while we've been waiting for environmental documentation to be complete. We are now expecting that that will be wrapped up fairly soon, at least that's what we're hearing from our contacts that are working with staff in Sacramento. And that may mean that there's a decision by spring of 2007 and then we'll have a chance to look at that, react to it and brief you on the results of it. Our report is also about groundwater reporting. That's an important part of our city water supply. We do want to report and make clear that our groundwater basins are in balance based on the way we use water. We use it heavily during droughts and let it rest during periods of non-drought. But in the meantime, it is a part of our water supply to maintain water quality in the distribution system. And we do that annually to a small degree, even when we're not having a drought situation. And finally, we are working to be, to identify the improvements that'll be needed in the treatment and distribution facilities of the city to help continue to use groundwater to meet increasingly stringent standards on drinking water. We continue to operate the conservation program and there's a number of things going on there. We continue the water checkups, almost 400 last year. Those are free to all city water customers. They can call our city water hotline, sign up for that, get it scheduled. We continue to train green gardeners in the principles of sustainable landscaping and including water conservation. Over 800 trained so far. This year, we operated the Be Water Wise Media Campaign radio spots and to get the public involved in the water conservation message. And the Smart Irrigation Program continues. Right now, we're up to about 171 city customers. These are our largest water users in the residential sector that we're targeting with the Smart Irrigation controllers. About 20% savings of what we're seeing on that now by using the weather-based irrigation schedule that's received by the radio controller at the irrigation station. School presentations continue, almost 200 presentations, reaching about 2,000 students. We've enhanced the commercial rebate program, trying to tickle some savings out of that sector. Not as much response there. I think we're probably seeing, some of the technologies are somewhat saturated because of standards that have been in effect, but we have bumped up rebates amounts there to try to get some more interest. Another thing that was introduced this year was the watering index. You see it on our website there, it's a cut on the side there. This is updated every week to give our water users a percentage of their normal irrigation schedule that they can set the controller to, to maximize the amount of water that's applied to landscape. We are continuing on installation of waterless urinals in city facilities to demonstrate technology and become familiar with it. And we are offering rebates on that in the commercial sector too. And finally, there is the upgrade on the city's website, both the City of Santa Barbara website and a regional website that we refer to as sbwater.org. On recycled water, we are out to bid now on the extension to Serv Cottage Hospital. We expect that to be put in soon. The pump station at La Mesa Park is under construction, about to be completed. And we're entering design phase for rehabilitation of the tertiary filters at Elstera Wastewater Treatment Plant. On water supply capital projects, we continue to work on groundwater wells, two new wells. The wells have been drilled, but we're working on the above-ground facilities, including some testing to refine the design for water treatment. And we have completed the preliminary design report on the Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant. That's across the street from our Garden Street office. It treats groundwater from the wells in that area and we're now gearing up to enter environmental review on that and then proceed with final design. And finally, this is our chart that tracks water demand and water supply. The green line represents the city's approved water supply. The red line is sort of a theoretical tabulation of increases in demand and decreases resulting from conservation on a calculated basis. The blue line is actually more important. That's our actual water use that goes up and down there. Sort of trending down lately, we've been in a bit of a wet cycle, but that's also the result of our conservation program, customers responding to that. result of our conservation program, customers responding to that. And we'd be happy to take any questions on that and.
That's good. We have a few questions. Ms. Snyder?
Thank you. Always, there's just so much going on in terms of conservation. I appreciate the summary and good report. Two meetings I attended in the last couple of weeks having to do with the school district and checking their watering system, their irrigation system. One was last week's Sustainability Committee meeting that Mr. Barnwell mentioned earlier. And then I've been involved with Harding School as just being on the west side and being invited to be part of what can we do in terms of upgrading a whole bunch of things in relation to Harding School. And the issue came up if, I know by request, anyone can call and get some sort of, an audit on how their irrigation system's working. Is there better tools they can use in terms of their irrigation system? But I'm curious if we could set up something with the school district because at Harding, the principal there didn't know that that option was available to her. And it was brought up at the Sustainability Committee. If there's some struck, you know, arrangement we can make with the school district citywide because obviously that will help us and it's probably a huge, you know, huge product in terms of all the irrigation, all the fields on the school, school site. So just encouragement to coordinate with the school district. And that might come up, I think, in our joint meeting coming up in, in January with the school district because there'll be a section on the Sustainability Committee and what's happening. And so whatever we can do on our end to help them be more sustainable in terms of their water usage would be fabulous and anything you can do to help would be great. So, but thank you for a great report.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
First, a request and then some questions. One is when you bring this to, to us and maybe sometime in the next year before you bring it to us, it'd be nice if we had a yearly breakdown on such things as the ETE irrigation controllers, the waterless urinal installations, so that we see whether we're doing more or whether it's remaining constant or if we're doing less. And then I just wanted to get at some point a comparison between some of the additional conservation measures that we could do, like cash for grass programs or other things versus the amount that we spend on the most expensive parts of our water system that we don't necessarily need to participate in, in a given year. If we could conserve more, for instance, we could order less state water. So it'd be nice to look at some of the comparisons if we were to engage in, in some of the conservation measures that we don't currently do, whether those are additional rebates for water conserving Energy Star appliances or whether that was cash for grass or other conservation measures.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Williams, that is the heart of the water supply program, the long-term supply program, which is due for renewal soon. And we certainly look forward to bringing back a list of items that, that we've evaluated for comment by the council to incorporate into it, into the program and use that to adjust our expected demand and supply scenario and then fund those programs as we move on into the next phase of the long-term supply program. So that's very much a part of what we're trying to do.
Thanks, Bill.
Good. Mr. Barnwell?
I, I think Mr. Williams brings up an interesting point about how that information gets distributed to us. It was my understanding that our baseline data of energy and water consumption through the sustainable cities concept will be the format in which we will begin to track the city's water use, the implementation of those no-water toilets, et cetera. Is that correct or not? Or could we go there?
It is correct in terms of city facility water use. That will be part of that system. Also, on top of that, we of course like to track usage citywide for all of our customers and that's been a key part of what we do to, to produce the graph that you saw there. Also to track per capita usage and trends that are reflected in that chart that reflect on how conservation's being applied.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Horton?
I'd like to move that we receive a staff presentation and that we approve and adopt the City of Santa Barbara Water Supply Management Report, finding that groundwater resources are in long-term balance.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to take item sixteen. Thank you very much. Item sixteen, which will be a real short closed session and allows us to move around a little and you all can get prepared here for item seventeen. So, I mean for item fifteen. So, item sixteen, no, it's a very short one. Item sixteen, you want to read that, please? Just closed session, I think.
Item number sixteen, public employee appointment.
Okay. They'll give us just a few minutes in my office, please, and then the rest of you get ready for item number fifteen. Thank you.
You, you're no good, you're no good, you're no good, baby, you're no good. Oh, you know what I mean? You're no good, you're no good, you're no good, you're no good, no good. Oh, 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 what a fool you are, baby, and I'm going my way. Forget about you, baby, I'm leaving to stay. You're no good, no good, no good, baby, you're no good. Oh, I say, you're no good, no good, you're no good, baby, you're no good.
What kind of fool do you think I am?
What kind of fool do you think I am?
What kind of fool do you think I am?
What kind of fool do you think I am?
What kind of fool do you think I am?
Don't you ever leave me sad and blue. Don't you ever tell me we are through. Don't you ever hurt me if you do. Everything you say will be true. People say it's just a summer romance. People say our love won't last for long. There's no sure we will part, but I know deep in my heart that they are wrong. I don't care what the people say. I don't really care what the people say. It's just the way the stars shine. And it really isn't love at all. But each time that we kiss, I just know we'll be like this, summer, winter and fall. I don't care what the people say. I don't really care what the people say. Don't you ever leave me sad and blue. Don't you ever tell me we are through. Don't you ever hurt me if you do. Everything you say will be true. People say it's just a summer romance. But I know our love is here to stay. Let's go strong by the sea, 'cause it doesn't bother me what the people say. I don't care what the people say. I don't really care what the people say. I don't care what the people say. I don't really care what the people say. I don't care what the people say. I don't really care what the people say. I don't care what the people say. I don't really care what the people say. Haven't you heard about the guy known as the cheater? He'll take your girl and then he'll lie and he'll mistreat her. It seems every day now, you hear people say now. Look out for the cheater, make way for the fool or the clown. Look out for the cheater, he's gonna build you up just to let you down. All of your girls have met a street inside your door now. He'll hurt you once then turn around and hurt you some more now. Maybe it's our dream, you hear people saying. Look out for the cheater, make way for the fool or the clown. Look out for the cheater, he's gonna build you up just to let you down. The cheater took my baby away from me. See how I told him, baby? I'll get her back, just wait and see, wait and see. One of these days he'll find a girl who knows all about him. She's gonna break his carefully home and go on without him. And you'll hear their anger, oh, oh, the laughter. Look out for the cheater, too bad for the fool or the clown. Just break for the cheater who used to build you up just to let you down. Look out for the cheater, too bad for the fool or the clown. Just break for the cheater who used to build you up just to let you down. Please lock me away and don't allow the day here inside where I hide with my loneliness. I don't care what they say, I won't stay in a world without love. Birds sing out of tune and rain clouds hide the moon. I'm okay here, I'll stay with my loneliness. I don't care what they say, I won't stay in a world without love. So I wait and in a while I will see my true love smile. She may come, I know not when. When she does, I'll lose, so baby, until then, lock me away and don't allow the day here inside where I hide with my loneliness. I don't care what they say, I won't stay in a world without love. So I wait and in a while I will see my true love smile. She may come, I know not when. When she does, I'll lose, so baby, until then, lock me away and don't allow the day here inside where I hide with my loneliness. I don't care what they say, I won't stay in a world without love. I don't care what they say, I won't stay in a world without love. Sleigh bells ring, are you listening? In the lane, snow is glistening. A beautiful sight, we're happy tonight, walking in a winter wonderland. Gone away is the bluebird, here to stay is a new bird. He sings a love song as we go along, walking in a winter wonderland. In the meadow we can build a snowman, then pretend that he is parson brown. He'll say, are you married? We'll say, no man. But you can do the job when you're in town. Later on we will conspire as we dream by the fire to face unafraid the plans that we made, walking in a winter wonderland. Over the ground lies a mantle of white, a heaven of diamonds shine down through the night. Two.
Please, and get ready for item number fifteen. We'll call the city council meeting back to order. And we want to report out first on item sixteen, which was our closed session. And we don't usually report out, but this one is a, a good, good one to report out on. Mr. Armstrong?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council, I wanted to report out the results of our closed session. The city council, a unanimous. The city council unanimously approved my appointment of Irene Macias as our new library director effective immediately.
Yay. Irene? That's terrific. A lot of people already know Irene because she's worked over there as an interim library director. But, but we're really glad to have her on permanently. So thank you so much. She just came in. Thanks Irene. Okay, item number fifteen, please.
Item number fifteen, annexation of nine hundred through eleven hundred Las Pecitas Road, Veronica Meadows Specific Plan.
Okay, Mr. Casey.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, wait, there's more to read. I forgot. She has to read B and C.
Yes, including recommendation B, that council introduced and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, in ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, initiating the annexation of the Veronica Meadows Specific Plan area to the City of Santa Barbara, adopting a specific plan for the Veronica Meadows Specific Plan area, the SP nine zone, and related land use actions and findings for property located at nine hundred through eleven hundred Las Pecitas Road. Assesses parcel numbers zero four seven dash zero one zero dash zero one one, zero four seven dash zero one zero dash zero one six, zero four seven dash zero six one dash zero two six, and a portion of zero four seven dash zero one zero dash zero five three. And recommendation C, that council adopt by reading of title only, resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, making environmental findings and approving a lot line adjustment, coastal development permit, and tentative subdivision map for an application of Peak Las Pecitas Partners, nine hundred through eleven hundred block of Las Pecitas Road. That's it.
That's it. Okay. We left, we're left up there. That's reading by title only and we'll waive further reading unless we have some objection. Okay, now, Mr. Casey.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. We're back on this item again. Veronica Meadows Specific Plan, consideration for council. We were back before you a couple of months ago and this is, in many ways, a continuation of that item. So Allison DeBusschere will give a brief council agenda presentation for you. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to go into any details that you'd like.
Okay, Mr. DeBusschere.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. As was just stated, this project is the Veronica Meadows Specific Plan and Annexation. And to give you a brief picture of the site, it's located at the terminus of Allen Road and west of Las Pecitas Road and a Royal Borough Creek. The parcel immediately east of the site is a city-owned parcel. And this site is currently within the jurisdiction of the County of Santa Barbara. The proposal is to annex the parcels into the city and develop the site with housing. In order to annex the site, the city must apply general plan, local coastal plan, and zoning designations. This project was most recently reviewed by the city council on October third, two thousand and six. At that time, it was continued and the council's motion included several items which are identified here. And I won't go through those specifically. One thing that I do want to mention is that, one thing that was suggested by the council is to consider two to four affordable units. In response, the applicant has submitted two development alternatives for consideration today. There are several actions that are required by the city council on this project and those were read when this item was introduced, so I won't go through them individually. This is a table that shows the two alternatives that are being proposed by the applicant, as well as the plan that was reviewed in March of this year. One option, identified as alternative one, is for twenty-three homes. And alternative two is for a twenty-five unit project that includes two affordable housing units. This is a site plan of the project as it was reviewed last March. And as you can see, there were two homes proposed at the Allen Road cul-de-sac, four homes located off of the private drive, and seventeen homes within the Loop Road area. Alternative one still has the two homes at the end of the cul-de-sac. There are two homes off of the private drive rather than the four that were there previously. And there are nineteen homes proposed within the Loop Road area where there were seventeen previously. Alternative two includes three homes at the terminus of Allen Road, previously there were two, three homes off the private driveway, previously there were four, and nineteen homes within the Loop where previously there were seventeen. This option does include the two affordable units within the Loop Road area. Staff has prepared an addendum to the certified EIR to address the minor changes and additions necessary to make the EIR adequate for either of the two alternatives proposed today. The project does require the city council to make a statement of overriding considerations for the significant unavoidable impacts related to biological impacts from the bridge, temporary construction-related noise impacts, and cumulative traffic impacts. This concludes staff's report and we can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, we had, we went through all the steps of an appeal in this one. So I'm not quite sure where to go from here, but it seems like maybe the applicant.
Madam Mayor.
I know it's not an appeal either.
Exactly. It's an annexation.
I'm just saying, we had all, all sides and then we even had the public and we, we closed the public hearing, but I know I've got people that want to speak about this, which is just fine.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we'd recommend hearing from the applicant and then opening the public hearing and hear from the public.
Okay, that works fine. And let me turn on that microphone, Mr. Mayor Connor.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Steve Americona, representing the applicant in this matter. With the council's indulgence, what I would request permission to do would be to make a very brief presentation now for maybe three or four minutes and then save the rest of my time for responding to any comments that may come out during the public comment period.
Okay.
If I may do that.
Sure.
There's been a small blizzard of letters and other things that have come into city hall over the last four days and I've been getting them as they, as they've come in. And I've tried to prepare responses to those to assist the council in sorting through them. So if I may, what I'd like to do is to give these to the council now. There, I've got enough copies for the public too, if the public wants to have some. And I've got some for the staff as well.
Okay.
So this will be our written submission for today.
Okay.
There's one in here for Steve, too. This is the fourth time we've been before you over the last nine months. You're very familiar with the project. The last time, in October, you considered a fifteen-unit project and you asked us to take another look at, at the project and come back with the, something like the twenty-three unit project that we had been before you in, in March. What I'd like to do is to show you a site plan of the March proposal and then alternatives one and alternatives two. And this is a bit redundant to the report that Allison just gave you. And, and I should, I should mention that the staff has really done an extraordinary job in trying to pull all this together in a very short time. This is the March plan. As you can see, two houses take access from Allen Road. There are four houses between Allen Road and the main body of the project. So that's a total of six. And then there are seventeen homes at the other end of the north end of the project. You can see the hundred-foot creek setback line on that plan and the bridge over, over the creek to Las Pecitas Road. Going to alternative one, which is the next slide. On this one, we have tried to enlarge the open space between unit four and the, what we're calling the Loop Road. And so we moved two of the homes from that area over to the Loop Road area. So now we've got four at the southern end of the property and nineteen at the northern end of the property. You'll notice at the very far right, there used to be two homes at that, that one lot to the right of where it says Oak Grove. Now there are two. The other alternative responding to the suggestion that we include affordable housing units in the project is alternative two. For this, we put the two affordable units, as you will see, right by the words Oak Grove on the right side of the slide, units thirteen and fourteen. Those are going to be closest to the public transit stop, which is by Ewing's Park. And then we have six units at the southern end, three that are served by the cul-de-sac at Allen Road and three that are served by the long driveway off of the Loop Road. From our point of view, the decision between alternative one and two is a matter for the council's discretion. We are prepared to go along with either one of those, either one of those alternatives. And with that, I will defer and return to respond to public comment. Unless there are questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. We have approximately twenty-some speakers, so we will begin. I have, I'll put two minutes on here. Mr. Jordan first, Michael Jordan. You hear, yeah. To be followed by Gary Schumacher. And if you could, fine, I don't mean just you, Mr. Jordan, but if everybody could just address the version one, version two, because that's what is before us. Although if you want to talk about something else, that's fine, but that's what I'm thinking about.
I guess I can go. I have no preference. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The disclaimer is I'm here on my own this afternoon, not as an official member of the Creeks Committee, because you guys all know that I've seen this in that role. I'm hopeful that you continue to, to view this, this project as an opportunity that will, that will allow us to use somebody else's resources to, to build a set of comprehensive community benefits. You've, you've heard most of these before, so I'll just go through, through real quick. This version of the project versus the last version you saw will allow somebody else to do the restoration and the maintenance and finance it, rather than the city pick up part of that or the outgoing years. It'll allow the bridge and the public access, pedestrian public access path to come across Las Pecitas and run down to the beach. It'll allow a more manageable and more environmental-friendly stormwater management outflow coming down the middle of those houses and keep it daylighted rather than putting it in a funnel and running it down and accelerating it into the creek. And it'll also begin to start the process of turning the Las Pecitas Highway into something that more represents a neighborhood street. One of the, one of the reasons I think this is the, the wave of the future, collaboration with a developer, or several of the reasons, is that it allows you to leverage the, the assets you have with the assets the, the improvements will bring and get a greater return than you would if you were to do this separately or for it not to happen at all. It also begins, when you're looking around the city as a whole, to establish a culture for what can be expected or what should be expected when light projects come along, even if they're much smaller projects on individual parcels that border a creek. And it gives you an opportunity to address the effects of the prior historical development in anything above the watershed that's gone on that's led to the current degradation. I would imagine what you're going to hear today is, is a couple of things. You're going to give me ten seconds, aren't you? Running down, I'm sorry. You're going to hear a bridge versus access. Okay, I hope that you can see that the cumulative effects of that bridge are far-reaching and a benefit from a community standpoint, rather than a quick negative benefit in terms of our environmental, environmental impact. Okay, so I'd encourage you to continue to try and work with this project to, to meet all those benefits and make it a valuable community asset. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gary Schumacher, wait just a second. Before you start talking, let me get the next person, who's Betty Schumacher, whom I think you know.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Gary Schumacher. I live on Allen Road, been there about forty years. I want to address you just essentially to say thank you. You've come a long way. It's been a lot of years. What we're about to complete here, I hope, is to finish off an issue that we've been living with for a long time. Sometime in the near future, I expect that there will no longer be people dumping trash at the end of my road. Sometime in the future, I expect that there will no longer be motorcycles tearing up that area, going up the side of the hill. Perhaps a Royal Creek will no longer tear up our sewer line and mess up our water lines. This is in the future and I thank you for what you've done to bring us to this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Betty Schumacher, followed by Patricia Foley.
I just wanted to reaffirm what people have said.
Okay, you're not on the mic, so she just says she wanted to reaffirm what people have said. Thank you, Betty. Patricia Foley, followed by Maria Gordon.
Dear Madam Mayor and members of the council, on behalf of the homeowners represented by the, our association, the Braemar Ranch Homeowners Association, we would like to present our concerns and recommendations. These are the key, key issues. First, if the council determines to allow a development at all, in light of the current proposal, we would support a variant of the applicant-submitted alternative one development plan. Specifically, we support this plan on the condition that the applicant completely eliminate or otherwise incorporate homes numbers one, excuse me, numbers three and four in the Oak Grove Road Loop. This change would eliminate the extended driveway and associated paving and preclude future efforts to bypass community opposition to any project access via Allen Road. Such a change to the project would allow for increased open space, as well as a project buffer between the neighborhoods, greatly limiting the direct impact to our residents on Allen Road. Second, we request the city council, as a condition of approval, restrict any easements off Oak Grove Road now or in the future, thereby eliminating the potential for expanding the scope of the development in the area, as well as potential future efforts to access Allen Road. Lastly, we like to express in the strongest terms our support for the recent council decision directing that access to Veronica Meadows project be accessed via a bridge from Las Pecitas. Not only is this route more efficient for all access to the freeway, primary shopping areas, and downtown, but we believe that the neighborhood protection and safety of families with children is of the utmost priority. Thus limiting traffic on Allen Road outweighs the environmental impacts of the bridge development. We request that the council override the supposed class one impact based on the benefits to the Allen Road neighborhood when compared to the short-term environmental impact. Sincerely yours, the Braemar Ranch Homeowners Association. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on this. Maria Gordon, followed by Jeff Rupert.
Maria Gordon, acting president of SWAP. And I'll refer you to SWAP's letter on this subject, which I'm sorry, got too late. It just took a long time to get through. And I'll just quickly summarize to say that SWAP wishes to see SECRECOM complied with and that this, as far as we can tell at this moment, naturally entails denying the project proposal before you. And that furthermore, we ask you to bring back the six residential homes alternative for consideration. For myself, I wish to go further than my personal letter. Under SECRE, as the EIR shows, the present project is not the least damaging feasible development alternative for this site. I think it's a moot point and I do want to hear what the legal beagles have to say about whether or not the alternative is in the EIR. It was interesting to just have a quick scan through the document presented to you. So I'm open to that legal question being resolved. I see that the alternative's not in the ER, but how much that affects the legal situation, I don't know. But it appears that the present proposal's being considered because you've been convinced that it offers the community enough benefits and therefore overriding considerations to outweigh the harm that it will do. Well, in our, my considered opinion, this is not so. And this leads to some questions for you. There are no overriding benefits to be claimed on a project until significant impacts have been avoided or mitigated to the maximum extent possible. This doesn't appear yet to have occurred with the present project, partly because that alternative exists and I think there are other reasons too, which you'll hear better outlined by Creek experts. The present project cannot have overriding considerations attached to it until there's been a demonstration that the impacts have been avoided or mitigated to the maximum extent possible. So we should ignore what appear to be outweighing community benefits until we see that demonstrated. And just where are the environmentalists, the Creek experts, not geomorphologists, but Creek experts who are claiming that the overriding benefits exist here to the Creek? I'm a little bit staggered to read that nobody stood up and contested the Creek plan proposed for this project, because I've not heard a single one claim that what the developer is proposing as restoration is actually restoration. And I'm not talking about geomorphologists, I'm talking about Creek experts, the people who guide you on Creek planning throughout the city and whose word is listened to on other projects. So I don't understand where that can even come from as an outweighing benefit. And are you aware that in resolving the traffic issue, you're actually trading off a class three impact by creating a class one impact? That's just totally illogical when there's no need for it, when you could build fewer homes, when it could be a better project that does avoid or more mitigate the impacts that you would see to the Creek through building these houses. There's an illogical weighing going on here. And furthermore, where's the faith in your staff, in your own expertise, and the community, especially after hearing all the heartening reports of community efforts this afternoon? Where is all that faith when you're going to take what passes for, you know, Where is all that faith when you're going to take what passes for, you know, a really not a problem-solving solution from a developer, the traffic is not a huge problem? We need to go further and actually look at this land in conjunction with the developer to come up with something that is going to solve the environmental biological impacts, which are far greater, and not look at the more minor impacts of this project. Thank you.
Jeff Rupert will be followed by Robin Smith.
Hi, I'm Jeff Rupert. I live at the end of Allen Road, closest to the project. And I would just like to thank you on, for looking after the interest of our neighborhood and my family and my children. Thank you also. I also, only one thing I have to say is that I would like to approve, or like you to approve, project number one, proposal number one. The, the concerns that I have, being adjacent to these homes, is the size of these homes are going to be thirty-five hundred square feet, roughly, is my understanding. And my home and my neighbors' homes are, you know, thirteen hundred square feet, fourteen hundred square feet. If we put three homes down there, you know, with the homes behind it, it's, the, the scale of the neighborhood is going to be changed. I think two homes finished with the cul-de-sac, which was one of the original plans, I think is still consistent with our neighborhood, and, you know, we don't expect anybody to build, you know, fifteen hundred square foot homes, but we would like to see the, the less impact to that end of the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Smith will be followed by Robin, Robert Rice.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I and my family have lived on Solana Court for over forty years and plan to continue doing so. And my main thing that I want to say is express support for the bridge access. And I guess what I'm feeling right now is a little, a little bit of panic, worrying that maybe that is, we're going to go back to, to square something, one, ten, fifteen, I'm not sure, but just want to reiterate that, what other people have said, and thank you for your consideration. And I guess the other piece is that it would be nice to, to, for many of us, to sort of stop worrying about this and have this in the back of our minds every time we leave our homes and return. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Robert Rice will be followed by Joe Wagner.
Madam Mayor, Senate Council, I also would like to thank you for the work you've been doing. And I would very much like to second Patricia Foley's call for Alternative One and the elimination of homes three and four and their support driveway. As a resident of Allen Road, I think this would be the best protection and give us the most safety on our street, which, as I've spoken of before, is my main reason for being here, is safety for my family and my grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Wagner, followed by Ridge, oops, I'm sorry, by Brian Troutwine. She just said "here, here." That works. Brian Troutwine will be next, followed by Shiva Pulevka.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Brian Troutwine with the Environmental Defense Center. EDC is a representative of the South Coast Watershed Alliance, a coalition of twelve environmental groups. The Watershed Alliance has consistently held that the city should not approve this project because it results in a Class One significant impact to a Royal Borough Creek. That impact will always be there. The Allen Road Access Alternative and the Six-Unit Residential Estates Alternative avoid the significant impact to the creek. We ask that you direct your staff to bring back an analysis of the residential estates alternative described in the January twenty-seventh, two thousand and five Plan Commission staff report, because this alternative is worth a closer look. It's a win-win solution, this residential estates alternative, because it avoids the Class One impact to the creek, it avoids the Class One impact to traffic at four local intersections, and it minimizes impacts to the neighbors on Allen Road. The EIR identified alternative creek setbacks as the environmentally superior alternative, but there's no evidence that the alternative creek setbacks alternative is infeasible. Furthermore, according to the EIR, the alternative creek setback alternative does not avoid or substantially lessen any of the significant impacts. Therefore, alternative creek setbacks is not the environmentally superior alternative. Of all the alternatives in the EIR, only the Allen Road Access Alternative avoids a Class One impact, the impact to a Royal Borough Creek. Therefore, the Allen Road Access Alternative is the EIR's environmentally superior alternative. Now, a reduced-density Allen Road Access Alternative would avoid the Class One impact to the creek, would lessen the significant tune of traffic impacts, and in addition, a scaled-down Allen Road Access Alternative would minimize traffic on Allen Road. Let me give you an example. The Six-Unit Residential Estates Alternative presented in the, in the two thousand and five Plan Commission staff report would avoid the significant impact to traffic, the significant impact to the creek. The residential estates alternative should be further analyzed as a potentially feasible way to avoid two of the three significant impacts identified in the EIR. Please ask city staff to return with more information on the Six-Unit Residential Estates Alternative. It's a win-win solution, again, because it avoids the impact to the creek, a significant impact. It avoids the significant traffic impact, and it minimizes traffic on Allen Road. Now, the city council cannot approve a project if there's a feasible alternative that would avoid or substantially lessen the project's significant environmental impact while fulfilling most of the project objectives. And there's absolutely no evidence in the record that the Allen Road Access Alternative studied in the EIR isn't feasible. This alternative, like the Six-Unit Residential Estates Alternative, avoids the Class One impact to Royal Borough. Given that there are these feasible alternatives, the Allen Road Access and the Six-Unit Residential Estates, these feasible alternatives that avoid Class One impacts, under SEQA, the city cannot approve the proposed project or new alternatives one or two. Instead, the city should analyze the residential estates alternative and approve whichever alternative, whichever feasible alternative avoids the most significant impacts. So in closing, I just wanted to have one more statement to wrap it all up here. The city does not have wide discretion to approve whichever project it wants to. Under SEQA, the city cannot approve a project when there is a feasible alternative that avoids Class One impacts. Such is the case here, and by approving the project, the city would be running afoul of SEQA's basic requirements. And my last statement would be that I would like to refer you to the letters of opposition to this project by the major environmental groups in town, the South Coast Watershed Alliance, but also Santa Barbara Channel Keeper, Santa Barbara Urban Creeks Council, Citizens Planning Association, SWAP, and Sierra Club, who is here today, who are all weighing in in opposition to this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shiva Pulevka, followed by Ridge Bakash.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As a Mesa resident that regularly, regularly traverses the Hendry's Beach area and the Las Positas Valley on foot, on a bike and in my car, I strongly encourage the council to reject the proposal for annexation and upzoning of nine hundred to eleven hundred to Las Positas Road and reject the proposed Veronica Meadows specific plan. While annexation of islands of county land within the city's sphere of influence is an appropriate approach for community development, Alternatives One and Two both represent a bad deal for the valley and for the city. The developer is requesting that the city endow his purchased land with vastly greater value than he purchased it for as a commercial enterprise. While there is nothing inherently wrong with such a request, these alternatives are not fair to the city of Santa Barbara, given what we will lose in the deal and based on how little we stand to gain. If approved, Santa Barbara loses an invaluable, unique expanse of verdant open space, an ecological corridor inhabited by imperiled marine riparian wildlife and migratory birds, a relatively wild and untraveled back entrance to our coast and city that provides residents and visitors one of the few remaining opportunities to glimpse the timeless, timeless underlying character of our place. In exchange, a Royal Borough Creek suffers significant, unmitigated, and intolerable environmental impacts. The wildlife and the human residents of the area suffer years of grading, construction, noise and pollution, and a vastly increased level of traffic. We permanently convert one of our area's few remaining greenfields in exchange for next to nothing to address our crisis in workforce housing. Concrete retaining walls and increased roadkill are exchanged for the joy and mystery of ecology, and we will propagate the dead-end paradigm of low-density sprawl in exchange for a few hundred feet of creek bank stabilization of highly questionable ecological value, and sacrifice a precious asset of wildness for suburban homogeneity. Rather than converting our few remaining green spaces, we should intensify our focus on increasing the vibrancy of our existing urban core. Our standards for allowing greenfield conversion with respect to either the fulfillment of articulated community needs or the provision of meaningful community benefits must be set much higher than is demonstrated in Alternatives One or Two. Urban infill typically a good idea is one thing, but Las Positas Valley is another. Visionary leaders know when to stop urban infill for Central Park, for Golden Gate Park, for Alice Keck Park Memorial Gardens. I appeal to you, Madam Mayor, and to the council, to show similar vision for our community, our place on this coast. Thank you.
Thank you. Ridge Bakash, followed by Walter Damp.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, at the end of November, we discovered that there were three plans that were presented from Mark Lee to city staff for recommendations that we passed on the city council for approval. The Braemar Ranch Homeowners Association formed a subcommittee to distribute these plans to the Allen Road neighborhood and follow up with a neighborhood meeting, which I chaired and was held last week. The purpose of this meeting was to determine which of these plans or other plans neighborhood would stand united to support. The Board of Directors had a special meeting to review these plans prior to the neighborhood meeting. At this meeting, Alternative Plan Number One, with some modifications, was voted on as the best conceptual plan for the Allen Road neighborhood. And at the neighborhood meeting last week, the neighborhood overwhelmingly supported Alternative Plan Number One, if there is going to be an approved project, with the following modifications. One, eliminate or incorporate in the Oak Grove roadway circle homes number three and number four. Two, eliminate the driveway at the south end of the loop, which provides access to homes three and four. This plan would eliminate the concern for the hillside stability behind homes number three and four. It would open up a larger greenbelt quarter for Allen Road neighborhood and Veronica Meadows residents to use for recreation as well. In addition, and more importantly, it would eliminate the increasing concerns of the neighborhood that Allen Road would not ever be open to access to Las Positas Road with any future city council decision. Hopefully, you can see why this is the best possible plan for the development. If not, it not only benefits the neighborhood, but the community as well. In addition, the neighborhood strongly requests the city council, as a condition of approval, restrict any easements off the Oak Grove, Oak Grove roadway now or in the future. Again, this will eliminate any potential for expanding any more development in the area in the future, as well as protecting the neighborhood from any potential efforts to access Allen Road. In conclusion, the Allen Road neighborhood wants to express its strong support with the city council's decision on this project by directing access to this project via a bridge from Las Positas Road. The neighbors are extremely pleased that city council clearly recognizes the overwhelming and overriding benefits to the neighborhood and the community of their approval of, of bridge access to this project. Thank you very much again for your support.
Thank you. Walter Knapp, followed by Inga Knapp.
Madam Mayor, city council members, I think all that has been said before, I can, Mr. Ridge Bakash said, I can agree with totally. To the environmental community that will speak and oppose this project, I would like to say one thing. Many of us are just as much of environmentalists as these people are. We lived there long enough. We are aware of the idea that maybe six homes from Allen Road would be, would be just a wonderful thing. We lived there long enough, and we are aware and sure that if this would go on, it's not now, but in the future, we may have many, many homes accessed from Allen Road. And therefore, we reject any access from Allen Road for our own and the future benefit of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Inga Knapp, followed by Keith Zandona.
Madam Mayor and city council, my name is Inga Knapp. The cul-de-sac on Allen Road is called a hammerhead. The original owner was asked to come up with this hammerhead so that fire trucks could turn around, since Allen Road is quite narrow at that point. Allen Road was never meant to be a thoroughfare. According to the fire department, no emergency access is needed in that area. Therefore, Allen Road should remain a dead-end road, permanently closed off with two houses to finish off the end of Allen Road. Allen Road was built narrow because it was to carry very little traffic. With beach overflow parking, it already carries more than enough traffic with cars parked on both sides of the street. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Keith Zandona will be followed by Ada Beibin.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Keith Zandona, and I am representing this Watershed Committee for the Citizens Planning Committee Association. I am also a second-generation Santa Barbara native. Veronica Springs development will have major impacts on the Las Positas Valley. I think the object of this hearing is to decrease or mitigate any impacts of this ill-conceived proposal. The reopening of the bridge discussion is very disturbing. This is a Class One impact to Royal Borough Creek and also to the traffic on the Las Positas corridor. What is disconcerting is the fact that the bridge was taken off the table once before, and here it is again. What's up? The creek setbacks need to be a hundred-foot to protect the major drainage, which has been, has had pollution problems for years. This setback should also apply to Campanel Creek drainage, which, in my understanding, will be partially coveted. This is a very troublesome, for just down the street, the city has just completed a project that uncoverded a tributary to improve Royal Borough Estuary's water quality. Even dry drainages can provide habitat and need to be protected as such. What really stands out to me is the negative impacts this development will have on everyone. The neighborhoods of Allen Road, the Stone Creek apartments, will suffer the most dramatic impacts to the, to this, to their lives. Every commuter on Las Positas will be impacted with increased traffic. The whole community will be impacted negatively. The only beneficiary will be the applicant. This all, is all because the applicant wants to cash in on, on his greed by not proceeding ahead with a smaller project as recommended.
Excuse me. You're up, your time is up, and we don't usually like to get so personal. It's really not something that's good.
Well, I didn't, I didn't use any names.
Applicant is a name, so just thank you anyway.
Okay. I'll finish up. The Six Zone Project and the use of Allen Road is the preferred alternative and will have the least amount of impacts on everyone and everything in the environment in this area who are directly involved with Class One impacts. Can we please get a grip on this and let the applicant go ahead with the smaller project without impacting the rest of the community, deny the bridge again, and downsize this project? Thank you.
Thank you. Ada Beibin, followed by Eddie Harris.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Ada Beibin, and I've lived on the Mesa for forty-eight years. Many changes have occurred in that time, more than I want to think about. This development, like most, is shortsighted. We haven't begun as a community to acknowledge the implications of our projects. I'm just going to address two very briefly, because you're getting probably more information than you need. Drainage, the ocean is dying, and it's dying from pollution that we contribute, and this development will add to the burden of household and city-used chemicals in a significant way. The project description provides for mitigation, but in a totally inadequate way. This is an issue we have not faced up to, though it becomes more of a threat to us with each day. And traffic flow, we certainly need improved pedestrian and bicycle traffic modes, which are promised in the project, and that's a good part of it. But I keep trying to visualize the effect of another traffic signal on Las Positas, and the results aren't comforting. The last thing this community needs is more expensive housing, but I realize the issue's not as simple as I would like to see it. I very much appreciate the dedication of all of you serving the community and your willingness to confront the many difficult decisions that you have to make.
Thank you. Eddie Harris will be followed by Carl, oops, Carlton, may I go on? I probably messed up that last name.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Eddie Harris, speaking to you for the Santa Barbara Urban Creeks Council. I urge you to deny the Veronica Meadows development project as currently proposed in Alternatives One and Two. The Urban Creeks Council points out to you that the Class One biological and the traffic impacts are avoidable, as has already been demonstrated, and therefore, the city should select a less damaging alternative. With regard to treatment of the creek, the plan is referred to as restoration, but it is not restoration. It is a bank armoring plan. We oppose the riprapping of a Royal Borough Creek. The plan has been reviewed by local creek restoration experts, including Brian Troutwine and others, who have experience in reviewing, commenting on, and managing creek restoration projects. On Sheet Two of the plans, the boulder placement plan depicts three-quarters of the creek bank lined with riprap revetment. Three-quarters of the creek bank of the length of that creek section. The plan includes large diameter boulders stacked for widths of ten to fifteen feet on the bank. This is simply a bank armoring plan disguised with vegetation. The creek plan should be The creek plan should be limited to restoration activities, eradicating non-native plants, planting native plants, and stabilizing using biotechnical erosion controls, not boulder riprap where needed. This will eliminate much of the expense and will make less damaging alternatives even more economically feasible. 12,000 cubic yards of grading in a Royal Borough Creek simply should not be allowed. Research shows that armoring creek banks creates problems upstream and downstream that will subsequently have to be repaired. Lining creek banks with riprap is an antiquated approach to bank stabilization. Riprapping of the banks at this location risks shifting erosion impacts downstream to the rear of homes that are already at risk for flooding. UCC has submitted literature to you that illustrates how riprap degrades creek habitats and causes downstream erosion. The restoration projects described in that packet all remove, and I emphasize the word "remove," they do not install riprap. Progressive cities, including Berkeley, Oakland, and Seattle, have all developed programs and ordinances prohibiting installation of riprap and requiring its removal. Santa Barbara should be at least as progressive and green as these other cities are. Please deny these alternatives that are before you today. We urge that you ask for a scaled-down project that avoids significant biological impacts to the creek and does not needlessly line the creek with revetment. Thank you for your careful consideration of our views.
Thank you. Carlton Magon, followed by Steve Dunn.
Madam City Council, I want to agree with the comments supplied by Braemar Ranch Homeowners' Association, and also thank you for your consideration to the Allen Road neighborhood.
Thank you. Steve Dunn will be followed by Gil Berry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Steve Dunn. I'm here today on behalf of myself and other native Santa Barbs. I sense that this is a very, very difficult decision for the council to make. We sympathize with that. I would like to ask that the council deny this project and see to it that staff come forward with a full study on the traffic impacts at Las Pecitas and Cliff Drive. California Environmental Quality Act has the necessary policy, I believe, that will allow the council to make findings and make a decision that will be palatable to all involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gil Berry, followed by Mickey Flax.
Hello, my name is Gil Berry. I'm speaking only for myself. Neither of the Allen Road or bridge access versions of this project is desired or acceptable to the overall community. Half the community is against one or the other. Not one speaker spoke in favor of this project at the last council hearing, not one. The city needs 2,000 square feet workforce housing, not 4,000 square feet luxury homes. We all desire to live within our limited resources. We have very limited resources capacity left in our city, so we must only approve projects that benefit our community. This project does not benefit our community, but it actually hurts it. Therefore, it should be denied. To counter the four arguments that I've heard, some worry that the project can be approved by the county. It can't because there's no sewer in the county. It's two miles away on the other side of Hope Ranch. There's a water overlap agreement, but there's not a city sewer overlap agreement. The city policy is that no county parcel may be connected to a city sewer. Some argue there might be a right to get the city approval. Since it's in the county, there's no rights of any city approval. Some argue that the applicant followed all the rules for six years. Well, I can understand some sympathy to that, but that's a faulty argument because it's the refusal to take no for an answer and the refusal to listen to counsel that has caused us to drag on so long. I heard you clearly tell the applicant three things: to make the houses 2,000 square feet, not 4,000 square feet, to cluster the homes and increase open space, and to match the density of the adjacent Braemar neighborhood, which is one home per net acre. The applicant has 10 net acres because five acres are used up by the creek and the street. Therefore, the appropriate density for the neighborhood would be 10 homes.
If you could wind up, please.
Lastly, the applicant says this project is not financially feasible if it's made smaller. I can assure you, that is nothing more than a developer's sales pitch. This project appears feasible at 10 homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mickey Flax will be followed by Scott Hosmer.
Good afternoon, I too am speaking just on my own behalf. I've been working a lot lately with the concept of HOT, the interrelationship of housing, open space, and transportation. And it's that concept that I think has to be applied to this project. That is, a concept of what are the resources that we have and what are the resource constraints? Benny White on the Planning Commission called this area "the lungs of Santa Barbara" and counseled against any kind of development here. What we seem to be saying is that we'll allow development, but only for rich folks, that we will give away the lungs of Santa Barbara to people if they can afford it. I'm suggesting that the traffic capacity of Las Pecitas and the intersections may not be adequate for the 25 large homes that are proposed, including their gardeners, nannies, cooks, decorators, remodeling tradesmen, et cetera, who come along with 4,000-square-foot homes, especially when there is another project in the pipeline, not in the immediate neighborhood but nearby, namely Hillside House. Do we want to give away a Royal Borough Creek, which will suffer Class 1 impacts, for 25 high-end homes, some of which are as much as 3,800 or 4,000 square feet? All of us in this room probably managed to grow up without even seeing a 3,800-square-foot hole. Do we put more traffic on Las Pecitas so that the developer and his investors can realize a good return? What are the overriding benefits to this community that counteract Class 1 impacts to our creek? The creek stabilization is essentially that, a creek bank stabilization of questionable value. Is this the housing that we need in our community? Or should we conserve our precious resources for projects like Hillside House, which will help preserve a special-need-serving community facility while providing rental housing, which we so desperately need, and a few modestly-sized market-rate units to help financially support the project? Increasingly, I am sad to say, as resources dwindle, we have a zero-sum game situation. We cannot give away the store to high-end housing if we hope to build housing for the people who work here. You must choose, as the city council, what kind of housing gets built and for whom. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Hosmer will be followed by David Landecker, and our last speaker will be Mike, uh-oh, Feeley, I think his last name is.
Thank you, City Council. I appreciate you revisiting the bridge. That means a lot to the neighborhood. I personally have never wanted this project. I'd rather keep it open space forever, as it is across the street, and have that all open space. We just feel a little bit like ping-pong balls between the environmentalists and the developer, and sometimes it gets confusing. We don't want big houses either. We just want to keep our road closed if there are houses. So, I'd, like I said, rather not have anything, but please, whatever you approve, keep the road closed and make sure it cannot be opened in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, David Landecker. Will be followed by Mike Feeley, last speaker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am David Landecker, president of the Citizens Planning Association. You know, we've heard a lot of talk about the creek, and we've heard a lot of talk about the bridge, and we've heard a lot of talk about the neighborhoods. What really ought to matter to people who are elected by the whole community, however, is what's best for this whole community. And as Ms. Flax just said, all of us know this community does not need 23 or 24 more high-end, expensive housing units unless we get something significant in return as a community. You are being asked to do this whole bunch of backflips to make this project happen: annexation, general plan amendment, environmental findings of overriding considerations, lotline adjustment, coastal development permit, and easements across city land. Those are all things that are discretionary. You don't have to do them. So you would only do them, presumably, if we're getting something we really need as a community. What are those things? The only things I've heard about so far are repairing the creek, which all the creek people say is really not helping the creek, and creating access into an open-space area which none of us particularly need access into unless there's a development there. As a matter of fact, access into open space tends to make it not open space anymore. What we need in this community is low-cost housing. And what this project maybe offers, one of the alternatives offers two units in exchange for 23 high-end units. I don't see how you, as representatives of the entire community, could say, "That's a benefit. That's something we really need." I think you need to say, "No, thank you," and you have that discretion. The mayor at the beginning of this hearing sort of indicated we're choosing. This hearing is about choosing between one choice or the other. This is not a choice between Allen Road or a bridge. Your decision is, do we want the project? This project? Well, you got two choices, both of which I submit to you are not good choices. I think you have to say to this developer, "We're really sorry, but we're not willing to give away the assets of this community that are placed in our trust for you to build 23 units we just don't need." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Feeley will be the last speaker.
I've heard the discussions. I'm asking the city council to deny this project, my concern being the creek. And creek really needs to be looked at both downstream and upstream this project, not just along the project. As, you know, I've heard it's seen, it's a bank armorization project, which, you know, is going to negatively impact what goes on downstream, so thank you.
Thank you. We have no more speaker slips. I have a couple questions, I think, that came up when people were speaking. Number one, somebody was talking, and I didn't write down who said this, but somebody talked about this being an up-zoning project. And from what I know, this is zoned in the county for a certain number of units, and we're really looking at a lot fewer units. Mr. Casey, Ms. Hubbell, somebody? Yeah?
Yes, Mayor Blum. The zoning in the county is actually very similar to what we had originally looked at. County zoning is eight units per acre, I believe. In part, there's a small portion of the property that is part of the Bolag property to the west that would be the lotline adjustment area that is zoned for one unit per 20 acres because it's part of a larger parcel that is on a steep hillside, although this portion is not. But generally speaking, this is similar to what the city originally looked at as part of the draft annexation policy update, was looking at about five to seven units per acre.
Which would be how many overall, about?
45 units or thereabouts.
That's what I thought it was. So we're looking a lot smaller project. And then, secondly, somebody said that by approving this, we'd be in violation of SEQA. And I know, Ms. Hubbell, you are very familiar with SEQA, so maybe you could speak to that.
And I'll probably let some of this slide over to Mr. Wiley as well. Basically, people have commented that if there are Class 1 impacts or if there are alternatives that are environmentally superior to the project that is before you, that the council must approve one of those or must not approve a project that has Class 1 impacts, and that is incorrect. First of all, the California Environmental Quality Act, its primary purpose is to provide information for decision-makers, decision-makers, and to make decision-makers think about the decisions that they are going to make by requiring that findings be made. And some of those findings include balancing the environmental effects of a project with other types of benefits. Sometimes there is a balance related to environmental effects. There are positive and negative effects on the environment caused by the same project. Also, there are social benefits or other economic benefits, other types of benefits that can be considered, again, in balancing the project. You do have to make a statement that if you're not approving a mitigation measure or if you are approving a project that does have a Class 1 impact, that the benefits of the project outweigh that Class 1 impact. That is part of that statement of overriding considerations. I don't know whether Mr. Wiley would like to add anything to that.
Maybe, Mr. Wiley.
Well, Madam Mayor, I did prepare some overheads on this, and I can go through them pretty quickly, but Jan summarized it pretty well.
Okay, maybe somebody could come over and do the overheads for you. Sorry, I got a coughed off in my mouth there. Jan can do that.
Madam Mayor, this first slide or first overhead is actually quotes from a couple of letters and emails. I think you heard it today, and actually, I think we heard this a week ago today on another project. It's pretty common, and maybe qualifies as an urban myth. Under SEQA, if an option exists that avoids significant impacts, then that option must be selected. SEQA does not mandate, actually, someone corrected themselves, and then they said the second one. SEQA does not mandate selection of a feasible alternative that does not cause significant impacts. Rather, it requires denial of a project where a feasible alternative exists that avoids the impacts. Then, Jan, if you could actually go to the SEQA guideline, which is the first one, and this is fairly long, I'll go through it quickly. I need the very top. There you go. No public agency shall approve, I've got this on writing, what did I give you? Shall approve or carry out a project for which an EIR has been certified, which is the case here, which identifies one or more significant environmental effects of the project, which is what we have here, a Class 1 impact, unless the public agency makes one or more written findings for each of those significant effects, accompanied by a brief explanation of the rationale for each finding. And then, if you, well, then, one or more of the findings. Changes or alterations have been required in or incorporated into the project which avoid or substantially lessen the significant environmental effect. Essentially, we haven't been able to do that here with the Class 1 impacts caused by the bridge. But if you go down to number three, and this is really the concept of overriding considerations, I think you're familiar with. Specific economic, legal, social, technological, or other considerations, including provisions of employment opportunities, et cetera, make infeasible the mitigation measures or project alternatives identified in the EIR. And then, there's a requirement that those findings be supported by substantial evidence. Jan, could you go to the next one? This is also a relevant SEQA regulation. After considering the final EIR, and in conjunction with making findings under Section 15091, which is the one we just talked about, the lead agency may decide whether or how to approve or carry out a project. And I think this is where people essentially misquote or take the language out of context with. A public agency shall not decide to approve or carry out a project for which an EIR was prepared unless either, and then if you go down to number two, the agency has eliminated or substantially lessened all significant effects on the environment where feasible, and be determined that any significant remaining effects on the environment found to be unavoidable are acceptable due to overriding considerations. And there are findings of overriding consideration. And then, here's just a quick definition of overriding consideration. I believe I heard a council member accurately summarize this several weeks ago, I think it was Mr. Barnwell. We've dealt with this a lot, but we keep hearing this. You have to approve the alternative that removes the significant impact, and that's not the case. It is the case if you have an isolated focus on SEQA and SEQA requirements, but fundamentally, SEQA is about environmental disclosure, about the decision-makers, the city council in this case, understanding all of the consequences, particularly the environmental consequences, and then bringing other considerations into the picture besides environmental considerations, social, economic, employment, housing, and finding, well, you know, understanding all the potential environmental impacts, we've got other reasons. the potential environmental impacts, we've got other reasons for either approving a project or conditioning a project, or for denying a project. But SEQA fundamentally, again, does not mandate that you make a particular decision.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And does anybody else have some questions? Go ahead, Mr. -- yeah, but, okay, we'll do Mr. Amerikana first, then.
Mr. Amerikana, go ahead.
I just thought if we had some questions. I guess not. Mr. Amerikana.
Madam Mayor, I'll be very brief. The response document that I gave you when I spoke before, I think, dealt with most of the comments that you heard verbally today, as well as a lot of the letters that came in. I'd just point out a couple of things for you, if I may. A number of the speakers spoke of the overriding considerations not justifying approval of the project, and they mentioned one, or sometimes two, of the overriding considerations. If you look at the resolution that's before you, it lists on pages 15 and 16, 22 overriding considerations that justify approval of the project, notwithstanding the remaining environmental effects. It's on page 15 and 16 of the resolution. I have it on an overhead, but it's tough to read, but I could put it up if you'd like.
Blurry?
Pardon me?
It's blurry?
No, it's not blurry, but it's small print.
Oh, small print. Oh, okay. I thought you said it was blurry. Oh, Statement of Overriding Considerations, I've got it. Page 15, 16. Okay. Yeah, that's the same one that's on page 15 of the, yeah, out of 56 pages, yeah.
I just copied them onto an overhead from the pages out of the resolution, so that everybody could see them. That's the first 10. I have two more pages of them, but they're available for anybody to see. But my point is, there's a large number of reasons, in terms of public benefit, why this project should and could be approved. The second point I would make is about the six-unit alternative that people are talking about. I've looked through the EIR, there's nothing in the EIR about it, and that's because the planning commission, almost four years ago, talked about the six-unit alternative and concluded that it wasn't feasible. It didn't qualify as one of the feasible alternatives for this project. And it didn't qualify in part because it didn't do what the owner of the property wanted to do, which included restoration of the creek. He wanted that as part of his project. And the six-unit alternative didn't meet that objective. It didn't meet a number of other objectives either, and it was infeasible for a number of other reasons. But that's why it's not in the EIR, and that's why it's not before you today as an alternative. That EIR was certified a year ago by the planning commission. That certification was not appealed to you, it's final, the EIR is final. That's pretty well done. So, the range of alternatives, I think, that you have is that what you already understand is before you. Third, on the issue of the creek design, today's the first time that any of us involved in this project can remember substantive comments, criticisms about the creek restoration plan. And that creek restoration plan has been around for almost two years now, and has been the subject of, by our count, we tried to count earlier this afternoon, somewhere between eight and 10 public hearings, in front of the Creeks Committee, in front of the Planning Commission, in front of the Parks Commission, and in front of the city council. And in none of those hearings was anything said critical about the plan. And, I suppose, the other point is that the plan isn't before you today. The conditions of approval that are before you require that we get approval of a creek restoration plan at some point in the future. And so, the time for the debate about the merits of the plan, and they can have their scientists and experts come forward, will be in front of another board, another body, at another time. It is not something you have to grapple with today, and I would suggest, given the fact that the criticism comes so late in the process, in fact, I saw the document just about an hour before your afternoon session started, that it's not something that we can practically deal with today. That's all I have to say by way of response, and the rest of them are in the document that I've given to you, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, and I think last time we spoke about putting the Creeks Plan to the Creeks Committee, and that would be, is that the plan with the Creeks Plan?
The Creek Plan is subject to peer review, number one.
Peer review, and then?
There has to be a city-engaged expert to look at the plan. We're going to pay for that.
Right.
And then, the plan is to be reviewed and approved at other places in the city, including involvement with the Creeks Advisory Committee. They are involved in that, they're to be involved in that process. That's right.
Okay, thank you. And you have a question for Mr. Amerikana? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Schneider.
Thank you, thank you. Just so my history is correct, when you mentioned that the EIR was finalized about over a year ago, is that the meeting, the last planning commission meeting I remember was when there was a 3-3 kind of lock, there was no decision, it was punted, or whatever, well, it was brought over to council. So, I don't know if that's the meeting you're referring to, and then I guess the question to staff is, does that in and of itself certify an EIR when there were all these 3-3 votes? Did that happen?
Mayor Blum and Councilmember Schneider, there was a separate vote that we took that was a 6-0 vote, supporting certification of the EIR.
Okay, I just want to get my memory clarified. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any more questions? You have a question for Mr. Amerikana?
I have a question for staff.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Williams?
Well, I'm looking at a copy of 21081A3, as that was cited by Mr. Wiley. SEQA requires us to have two things, not just the benefits that the project has, but requires us to make specific economic, legal, social, technological, or other considerations, including considerations for the provision of employment opportunities for highly-trained workers, make infeasible the mitigation measures or alternatives identified. So, we not only have to say that the benefits of this project outweigh the significant effects on the environment, but also have to say what makes the alternatives infeasible. And so, I'm wondering, what has made the alternatives infeasible?
We do have, in the resolution, starting on page 12 of 56, are the findings of infeasibility of the alternatives. And findings are part, feasibility is partially about meeting the objectives as outlined in the environmental impact report. It also can include economic infeasibility and other issues.
So, basically, we are mainly hedging that on economic infeasibility?
No, that's not true. Part of it is meeting the basic project objectives, and obviously, economics is certainly one of those things. But as you go through the individual findings we have listed, the no-project alternative does not meet the basic project objectives of developing the site for residential use to address ongoing city housing demand. In addition, this alternative does not promote the city's policy of annexing property that is within the city's sphere of influence, and an island of county jurisdiction within the city boundaries. The no-annexation alternative indicates that development of the property under county jurisdiction would not necessarily result in reduced environmental effects when compared to the proposed project, and would not be consistent with the city's policy to annex properties within the city's sphere at the earliest time possible, and would perpetuate the existence of that island. Both of those alternatives, there's no economic discussion really involved. Then, the next option was using, the next project alternative was use of the draft pre-annexation zoning designations that were considered as part of the annexation policy update. The pre-annexation policy update designated the entire 87-acre parcel as major hillside and open space. That was for the portion, that's the Bolag property, and that would include the four-and-a-half acres that would be lot line adjusted into this. So, that would also, that would restrict that one piece to one unit. However, the rest of it would have been five dwelling units per acre, which is more than the proposed two units per acre that is under consideration. So, the pre-annexation zoning designations would have actually allowed more development than is being proposed, and potentially increased environmental effects. The next alternative was the Allen Road Access Alternative, and that was, the conclusion was, is that that could increase some of the environmental impacts, including additional traffic, parking, and noise effects to the residents that live on the cul-de-sac, and the use of Allen Road would add traffic to the Allen Road-Cliff Drive intersection and contribute to the current congestion at Cliff and Las Vasitas. While this alternative would avoid the significant unavoidable biological impact of the proposed bridge, it would also forego the benefit of providing new pedestrian and bicycle coastal access from Las Vasitas Road and Ealing's Park. And this is discussed in more detail in the council agenda report. The next one was a secondary emergency access alternative, so on and so forth. We also had a concrete sidewalk alternative, we had a voided landslides alternative, alternative landslide stabilization techniques without using caissons, we had alternative creek setbacks, alternative drainage and stormwater treatment plan, and alternative bridge sites. And some of these did involve reductions in the total number of units by 11 to 12 units, and they were all considered infeasible.
Now, the alternatives, whether the specific alternatives outlined in the EIR, or hypothetical alternatives that just have fewer units, those were declared infeasible because they did not, could not accomplish some of the project goals, correct?
That's correct.
And that's a question of money.
Some of it is indeed a question of money. You wouldn't, for instance, with a six-unit proposal, end up with the ability to do creek restoration as part of the project.
And how do we know that?
Well, we, in part, relied on the applicant, and we looked at what the market might be for units at the end of a small-scale, middle-class neighborhood with six residential estates at the end, and what they might sell for.
So, at no time has the applicant actually provided us with proof of how much money he would make versus how much he would have to spend?
No, we don't require proof. We do require some analysis to make. And the planning commission went through that discussion of a five- or six-unit alternative and reached that conclusion as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's to the council. We have two alternatives here. I'm looking at, alternative one has 23 homes, and alternative two has 25 homes, and as Mr. Landecker says, you can do anything you want to. So, it's not just these two, but I'm looking at both these maps. I've noted that on, looking at alternative number one, homes one and two are much larger than, those are the ones at the end of Allen Road, by the way. Those are much larger than the ones on alternative two. They're much smaller homes, and you're fitting three in there. And I know at the other end of Allen Road, right at Cliff Drive, there's a very large home. I've been in there, it's a very beautiful home. But most of the homes along Allen Road are fairly small, so I would be happier with one, two, and three homes right at the end of Allen Road, right there, the smaller ones. But I don't know how the rest of the council feels. I think it's wonderful that there's so much open space here. The project maintains 35 acres, the 35-acre piece is open space, and all that part in the middle, I think, is very important to maintain it open and to keep the pedestrian access there. So, I think the city is getting, and the residents too, is getting a lot there. There are people that hike along there. I've been along there several times, and enjoy that area, and will enjoy it more when the creek is, the non-natives are pulled out of there and replanted with natives. So, I'm just saying, people are saying that we're not getting anything out of this, I disagree with that. So, I don't know, excuse me, I've got a cough drop in my mouth, but I don't know whether the one, two, and three homes versus the other one that just has two, much larger one, are of interest to this council, but I'd like to hear from you all what you think. Mr. House? You don't have to address that if you don't want to.
That's okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, everyone, for really coming out and for all your communications, and it's really quite something to see such an amazing flurry of emails and letters and all here at the very tail end of an amazing process, when it's gone on, as many of you know, for many years. One of the things that we, that came out in the environmental impact report that was very compelling for me was the current degraded state of the creek and the property, and it's the way it is right now, and in particular, that doing nothing to the creek would allow it to continue to degrade and continue to have problems that are not just in this stretch, but also continue further down. And left alone, the damage wouldn't be just to the habitat, but it also could be to the adjoining infrastructure and to the properties that are in the Allen Road area. I mean, there's an awful lot that could be, could happen if nothing were done. So, the question then becomes, how do we accomplish getting something done? There, I made a list for myself of things that really do make a development here make sense, in particular, the ones that we've been presented with at this very end of this long process. And to a large degree, it's, and I had really not compared them to what we have in our resolution here, and I should have, but it's pretty much a mirror. There's some things in here that are different from what I wrote down, but I believe that this is an unprecedented riparian habitat and creek restoration. It is something that is more robust and serious and sincere than anything, I think, we've ever seen in the city. It sets a new standard for creek setbacks. In the city of Santa Barbara, we have now only 25 feet on Mission Creek. We don't have any policies anywhere else. This sets a precedent for this that can then be carried up the creek further with future projects that will be coming along, and we know they will. It allows the creek restoration project to have what it really needs, which is peer review, and I hear that loud and clear in people's comments. It needs to be vetted at that level. Our Creek Committee will have an opportunity, as well as others, to participate. And it has a maintenance plan that goes on into perpetuity, that actually creates a funding source and a responsibility to maintain the creek, not just to fix it once and let it degrade again. We saw in the previous project that had come before us before, that there was no bridge, no pedestrian access, which is sorely needed to make a path viable through the city parkland or on either side of the creek. In this particular case, a bridge is put in, and it's put in at the right place. It's put in where it actually creates a better intersection at Ealing's Park, which currently is very dangerous. Anyone who's tried to get out of there in a car or walk across the street there, you're totally taking your life into your hands, and this is a huge benefit to the city of Santa Barbara. So, I have a list here, and, I mean, Mega Mansions 6, or 15, or some number, is totally out of place in this environment, and we've been fighting them all up and down the coast. It's the wrong direction to go. I feel very strongly about this, because this is one of those opportunities that we have, to work creatively and constructively with a compliant and a willing applicant who has truly come forward in good faith to bring forward something that will be of lasting benefit to the environment and to our neighborhoods. And it puts in stone the protections for the Allen Road neighborhood, which I think is something that we are now honoring after so many years of a promise that, you know, people have worried would be fulfilled or not. So, I can go on, and I have a lot of things on my list, but for me, those are overriding considerations, and the impacts to the creek with the bridge are, to the largest degree possible, overwhelmed, not just by these, but by the biological improvements to the habitat and to the creek itself. So, I just want to put that on the table, as far as whether it's number one and number two. I'm not so wedded to either, to be honest with you. You know, some of you have been watching this, I kind of gave up on the affordable housing piece a long time ago, thinking that that just never could possibly happen. But in this particular case, I know there's others on council for whom that's very important, and I could go along with that if that becomes the will of the majority. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Schneider?
Thank you. Thank you all for coming, and it's obviously apparent for the many, many hearings, not just the three from this council, but the other boards and commissions, how important this piece of property is for a lot of reasons, to the neighbors and to the general community. There's a lot of coulda, woulda, shouldas on this property, and I'll say again, I said it before, I wish the city would have bought this property way back when and made it a park. It didn't, and so hence, you know, we've had this long and winding road up to now. And the piece of, you know, from the last hearing we had, what was frustrating to me was that it appeared to have, there was one version that we heard in March, at that point in time, that was voted down. Another version was brought up, I think it was October, October, and it made it look like you had to do either-or, and there wasn't a third alternative. And at that point, the majority of the council, I was not And at that point, the majority of the council, I was not, one of them said, well, let's go back to the first version. And I understood the reasonings behind that the second version didn't work because of very significant, well, one, not one person spoke in favor of it, and that was, that's very significant. And two, that impact of the Allen Road neighbors, which is also very significant. So, to me, it was unfortunate that it seemed like that was the only two ways that we could go. And, because I don't think that that was the option. You know, that, that's not an option. Today, for some reason, Robert Frost came to mind. As you probably know, has a very famous poem, "Some say the world will end in fire, some say in ice. I say neither are good options." You know, I mean, so what, you know, there's got to be a better way. And so, I, you know, couldn't go through the, Jam said something very, Jan Hubbell said something very important, I thought, in terms of what does an overriding consideration really mean in the big picture. And basically, what she said was that the benefits of the project outweigh the class one impact. And I couldn't make the overriding considerations in March, couldn't make them in October. I can't make them today. I, I know I'm in the minority, or at least it looks, I'm in, actually, there's three and one, four people spoke so far, I'm in the minority here. So, I would ask that those who do think that can make the overriding considerations on some of these options, consider the very excellent suggestion from Pat Foley and the Braemer Association of taking out units three and four, getting rid of the added development footprint of the driveway. Keep the trail there for all the circulation elements that, I did agree with a pedestrian circulation element, that that was an important piece. To take those two, and frankly, to me, if we're going to have to do this, and I know other members want the affordable units, to make those two, if we look at option one, to keep two of the ones in the loop or anywhere as affordable. So, I mean, I'm suggesting this as options, knowing I'm not going to vote for this project. But I think in terms of what it is that we're trying to get out of this, what it is in terms of the cumulative impacts of the area, reducing the developable footprint and getting rid of the driveway, I think is, is another way to go for that. I do acknowledge the Allen Road neighbors quite heavily, and so, and I really appreciate all the time and energy you've put into this, because obviously, this is going to affect your daily lives. Certainly, I still think, frankly, that another 19 homes around a loop is going to affect your traffic. It's just not going to be off Allen Road, it's just going to be getting to Allen Road. And, you know, that's something to consider there. So, you know, again, a lot of, and I guess finally, looking at again, the cumulative impacts of, of the valley, both Ms. Flax and, and Mr. Landecker mentioned a number of things of what are we looking at here in the bigger picture? There's some major other options happening close by, including Ealing's Park and, and some good recreational activities and ideas going on there. Hillside House, I have not seen the details very recently, but certainly, in terms of the type of housing that's being provided there, I think needs to be looked at very carefully. And on the other end of the Las Pecitas 101 project, you know, there's Cottage Hospital, and all those have traffic impacts on that LOSF, meaning, you know, it's, it's a bad intersection to begin with. We have to be very careful of what we do, that, anything that relates to that intersection. And to me, this isn't the one that where the benefits of the project outweighs this particular class one impact and then the cumulative effect within the valley. So, if anything, I'm consistent on this, but I, I would appreciate from my fellow council members who do want the loop and the bridge, to consider that other piece, to try to reduce the developmental impact as much as possible, and also to acknowledge the Allen Road neighbors, to have that, have that sense of security, close off the, the loop, not having that extra driveway, and to acknowledge their, their considerations there. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Horton?
Of the current council, I think three of them came here from a planning commission before. And my, my prior position was Transportation and Circulation Committee. In fact, I was part of the first one before that, a parking committee. And so, my look at this thing was more from the circulation element, which I think is very important for the city. And then, a little bit later on, a look in terms of units that were more for workforce housing. So, the, the key points to me in this regard were that the project establishes better public access for pedestrians and bicyclists, which connects Ealing's and the west side to Arroyo Borough County Beach Park and the Allen Road and Braemer neighborhoods and homes altogether. That, that the project establishes safer pedestrian and bicycle access to the beach from the neighborhoods east of Las Pecitas, and that there's a new safe and pleasant creekside trail, which avoids having to walk along that sort of a freeway out there. To me, the project helps the city meet the key goals of the city's circulation element, bikeway and pedestrian master plans, and there's no cost to the taxpayer for this. Another one for me is that the bridge element minimizes new impacts to the Allen Road neighborhood, which compared to the other alternatives, seem to use Allen Road as an access point, which is hard for the neighbors. Another point, the project maintains the Allen Road neighborhood as a peaceful cul-de-sac area where children, as mentioned earlier today, can play safely, and I think that's important. And then, the final traffic item would be the project's traffic design, the access route, and the contributions for, for design of the roundabout at Cliff and Las Pecitas, and the signalized crosswalk at Las Pecitas across from Ealing's Park. All are extremely important in the, in the traffic flow in that area, and I think will help us meet the, the traffic needs of the future. And then, just a couple of comments on the affordable housing aspect of it. For me, I, I need to see the affordable units in this project for me to buy into it. I, I just think that, I guess I agree with many of the comments, that it's hard for me to see anything in the future that doesn't have an element like that in there. I just don't care at all where the units are located. It makes no difference to me whatsoever, so long as they're in there. And I'm totally flexible in terms of adjusting, as Councilmember Schneider has mentioned. I just, I don't, I don't have any really opinion on that. But I do need to see the, the affordable units in there for me to be happy, and so therefore, I guess I'm supportive of alternate two or some variation on that.
Okay. Mr. Williams?
I oppose this project, but I want to be fair. There are some benefits of it. I do think that Mr. Lee has hired a reputable geomorphologist. I do find that there is some substantial environmental benefits of the restoration plan. I don't think that they, they are using rocks, you know, in a manner that will speed up water, which is usually one of the reasons why those can have negative effects, the negative effects of weirs from, from speeding up water to downstream uses. The restoration plan slows down the water. I also appreciate that the applicant reduced the overall area of developed land, but I continue to have both environmental and neighborhood concerns about this project. First of all, the plan does not put in stone protections for Allen Road residents. There's a short gap between the end of the extended paved driveway and the end of Allen Road, and any subsequent city council could connect that and fairly cheaply and fairly easily. And so, I, I think if peoples, if my colleagues have a serious attempt to preserve the Allen Road resident, we will eliminate that driveway. There is no reason that it needs to be paved to have fire access. Just look at the Douglas Family Preserve. We have fire access there. We, those are not paved roads. That would eliminate two units. And again, I, I just feel that we are being inappropriate to continually allow the applicant to define the choices that this council has. We can approve what, whatever number of units that we want to there, that we feel is, that is in the interest of Santa Barbara. I also feel that, that approval of this project, at very least, violates the spirit of SEQA, if not the letter of SEQA, the letter of the law. After three years on this council, I've found the way that we handle findings, the necessary findings to approve projects in these cases, to be really, really inadequate. I, I think that we, we basically depend whether it's what, what improvements can be made or not made, or whether it can pencil out or not. At the end of the day, we're relying off of the applicant telling us that they don't have the money, or that they're not going to make enough from the, the project to do all the mitigations or do the alternatives that we, that are environmentally superior. And we never, we never analyze based on the market of, for homes, whether that's incorrect. I mean, we don't look at how many homes they're going to make, how much money they're going to make from those homes, and try to back out construction costs for, to have an independent analysis of the economic feasibility of these projects and their alternatives. And I, I think that's a shame. I, I think that this should be a wake-up call to us, because at the end of the day, we're, we have no proof that it is not feasible to do more mitigation, or that it's not feasible to do another alternative with less units. And I'll just cite that CEQA guidelines, section 15364, define feasible as capable of being accomplished. The statement of overriding considerations shall be supported by substantial evidence in the record. I don't see substantial evidence. I see the word of the applicant. And that's not substantial evidence, as far as I'm concerned, and, and I, this project just really saddens me, because, and I hope that the neighbors and, and anybody watching this, because the rains have started, one more season will be out there in Veronica Meadows, it may be the last. After the rains come down, it becomes a pretty beautiful place. And it's not pristine, it's, you know, there's some erosion, there's that big Hulk of a car left in the, in the middle of it. But there's something special about it, and it's a lot like many of the open spaces that I've seen growing up in this community. Most of those open spaces are gone. And it, I come to the very sad conclusion that the soul of Santa Barbara is for sale. And someday, we're going to look back and we're going to go, what have we done to this town? Thank you, Madam.
Mr. Bargumal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, one man's ceiling, I guess, is another man's floor. I like many things about this project. I don't think it's sad. We've never gone into the financial feasibility of projects that I can remember. And I think one of the reasons that we don't do it is because I don't think any homeowner who comes and wants to add a bedroom and a bath wants the city of Santa Barbara to look at the checking account of the homeowner and say, have you got enough money to add on? How much is this going to cost you? Can you guarantee us that you're going to be able to build this if we give you a building permit? That is not something that the city of Santa Barbara does on any project, from the largest to the smallest. And I would hope that the community would not want the city of Santa Barbara to be looking for these numbers on how much are you going to sell it for, and how much is it going to cost you, and how much is your profit going to be? We have never done that before, and I hope we never do that. Our discussion is land use. The city of Santa Barbara sits down with community members, and we talk about what do you want to do with this land? And then, we designate it. And that's the fair way to do it, which is what we've done here. This is not parkland. If we want it to be a park, I don't have any problem with buying the land and turning it into a park. That's what we did with Ealing's. I think it was a good thing. I correct you, not Ealing's, but Douglas Family Preserve. And in fact, we have that Ealing's Park right across the way. So, I don't believe it's appropriate to suggest that this landowner has some, is duty-bound to provide a park for the city. It just isn't correct, any more than any single homeowner would want the city to come by and say, we want your front yard for a park. It just isn't done that way. I, I think we're completely correct in down, what I would call downzoning, from what the county designation of land use was and what our original discussions were, because Mr. House and I were involved in discussions on this property with 48 units. And we told them, no. And they finally got down to this level. I agree with Mr. House most emphatically on what I consider to be solid ground for findings of substantial consideration to override the class one impact. The class one impact is the bridge. When we had all of these discussions before, Mr. Americonner is correct, no one complained about the creek restoration. The complaints were directed toward the EIR class one impact. That was the focus of all of the opposition. Now that we seem to be past that, opponents of the project are finding yet something else to complain about. But it doesn't seem to me, it doesn't seem to me fair to take arguments like that and to pull them out of thin air at the last moment. If you really don't believe in the creek restoration as a good plan, you should have been saying that months ago. Furthermore, I defy anyone in this room to tell me what the creek restoration plan really is. We haven't decided that completely yet. It's going to go through our creeks committee, it's going to be peer reviewed. We have seen a general overview of what it's going to be like. These, these arguments against this project, to me, quite clearly do not in any way form a poison pill for the project. Insofar as the word restoration, if we were talking about a building and we were using environmental lex, the lexicon of, of the environment, the word restoration on a creek would mean that every single house on Allen Road gets wiped out. Las Pecitas Boulevard is removed and the creek is restored. That is the definition of the use of the word restore. What we're talking about is a rehabilitation, and I don't think we should get confused on that. It's a rehabilitation of the creek. It's already an urban creek, and we cannot restore it. And to use the word and suggest that we can is, is incorrect. Also, I find it interesting that people are complaining about putting in a traffic signal. Every public meeting that I've been to, beginning several years ago, when we talked about putting a school at the Hidden Valley site, every single person that uses Las Pecitas when they're not in their car speeding and want to go fast, says, let's slow that down. And all of the neighbors that live in the Harding School District have had many, many discussions about how they wish they could get across Las Pecitas. So, adding a traffic signal, to me, is a great social benefit. And it prevents all the children from having to walk down Las Pecitas Boulevard to get to Hendry's Beach. The Allen Road neighbors, I, I feel like I'm on a first-name basis with half of them, because we've been doing this for so long. And they have adamantly maintained, for 10 years that I've been doing it, don't let Allen Road go through. And I, I support that completely. I don't know whether it's two or three houses there at the end of Allen Road, but it certainly is not any kind of an access through. I, I agree with Mr. Williams that the, well, let me ask a question, if I may, of the staff. This road right here, is that, we're proposing that to be a concrete road leading over here, or what was our proposal on that?
I think that's a trail from-
So, are there bollards, are there bollards here?
The pedestrian trail.
It's-
This one right here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is, is this thing right here any kind of an emergency access also with bollards across it, or is that just simply a pedestrian trail?
It's primarily a pedestrian trail.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Barnwell, that is part of the access, the pedestrian and bicycle access through the site. So, it would be concrete to accommodate those users.
Okay. I also have to think that unless we go 50 or 100 years into the future, any, any city council that wanted to continue this through and make access from Allen Road to Las Pecitas would get their head handed to them on a plate. I can't imagine that happening. This thing is being closed off by those cars, and if bollards or some other thing would go on there, I'd be supportive of that. I, I think Allen Road should come to a terminus there. End of story. I am like, my colleague, Mr. Horton, the, the affordable units are a very important component of this to me. You may or may not remember, but this project was exempt from having to put in any affordables because it predated the inclusionary, but they're putting them in anyway, often referred to as a bribe by the developer to get approval for the project, which just astounds me that someone would say such a thing. How can putting in affordable units, which we, which, if, if anything, it's extortion on the part of the city to, to get out of the developer to build, not a bribe on the part of the developer to get the city to approve? part of the developer to get the city to approve? I greatly appreciate the trail systems. Another thing, when someone says there's no benefit, are we not getting our five-acre city park restored? What's going on with that? Isn't that part of the creek restoration?
Yes, it is.
So when, when we speak of no benefits to the community, how can we honestly say that and discount that the five acres of the restoration is not a benefit? In addition to the other things that we're doing, in addition to all the transportational linkages, et cetera. And then I would invite anyone here, and the Allen Road neighbors, they all know this stuff like the back of their hand, but anyone in the community, take a walk down that creek. If that isn't one of the ugliest, most degraded sections of creek in the city limits of Santa Barbara, I'm a monkey's uncle. That is a horrible section of creek. And we're not restoring it, we're rehabilitating it, and I think the riprap is the appropriate way to go. And I have no doubt that when this thing, I hope, finally gets to some Creek, Creek Committee discussion, it'll be the, it'll be the best-designed creek you could possibly imagine. So I'm, I'm tending to head toward the 25 homes that has the two affordable units. I think Madam Mayor was absolutely correct in her request to free up some of this space. If I remember correctly, Madam Mayor, this was an area that you were concerned about. And I have, I've taken my, my rule to where we were before, and the other, see the curve of this thing right here? House number six used to sit way over here, and by your suggestion, we've punched this over another, almost another 150 feet in this direction, which creates a, a larger open space, which I, I greatly appreciate your having led us in that direction. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, and that's more defensible for fire if it comes down, for the fire engines if it comes down the hill, which I've seen it happen before. Ms. Falcone.
Thank you very much. Uh, forgive my voice, I've got a cold, but I hope you can hear me.
It's be right next to your microphone, I think.
It'll, it'll stop me from talking a lot, how's that? Um, okay. First of all, I do not, on landy level, really, I understand the arguments that people are making about the sensitivity of making sure that we follow CEQA absolutely as closely as, as humans are able to follow letters of law within a certain flexibility. Under this circumstance, I do not find any violation of CEQA because, as was accurately enunciated by Mr. Wiley and others, CEQA involves a balance, a very difficult and often impossible-to-make-everyone-happy balance, but nevertheless, a balance like we all make in our daily lives every day when we make choices. This balance is between impacts and community benefits. Now, as someone correctly said, I believe the community benefit has to be looked at as a whole, which didn't benefit the neighbors exactly two weeks ago, but I think will benefit the neighbors as they're sitting here today on this project because the benefit to the community as a whole involves a whole laundry list of things that are not, are not exactly proximate to this neighborhood, and therefore, this neighborhood can, with this project, be protected and still the community benefits can be obtained, which wasn't the case a couple of weeks ago. So, um, the benefit, the findings are legal and substantial and based on solid, solid foundations, and I don't think it does anyone a service to try to undermine the quality and the credibility of the findings. You can disagree with them, but I think that when we do them, we come to them out of honesty and based on actual facts. The connection to the West Side, the bike and pedestrian improvements accomplish key goals, and I was sad last time, that's when I was sad, to lose that connectivity. It's back. The circulation improvements with the light, I drive Las Pecitas all the time, I live on the other side of the mesa, and that's one of my main connections out into the world. It needs a light. It needs a light for anybody who's trying to get in and out of Ealing's, should you talk to Ealing's about helping you. Um, it, uh, it's absolutely fundamental for the traffic pattern on that road. The roundabout, everybody's forgotten about the roundabout. Roundabout is going to make all our lives so much better. Uh, it, it really helps, again, to accomplish those key transportation and circulation goals. The creek restoration improvement, erosion control, whatever you want to say about it is going to be a vast, amazing improvement on so many levels. Now, it's not done yet, and it has to be peer-reviewed. I want to make sure that this thing is watched like a hawk and that it can, it's the best creek improvement that we can possibly do to accomplish all of those goals of erosion and flood control and backyard preservation and making sure that the, the silt and all of the debris that is going to run down this creek and does every year doesn't do damage to what we just restored at a Royal Borough Beach, which looks beautiful, and we're all very proud of the work that the Creeks Committee and Jill Zachary's done over there. Annexation policies speak for themselves. We have little pockets all over the place that when the willing developer comes in, then that is an enormous goal of not us, not just us, but LAFCO and a lot of other entities. We end up preserving a significant amount of open space. Granted, some of that space is, is incredibly steep slope and would never be built on anyway, but it's acreage that can be accumulated toward a total development opportunity. In other words, all of the acres that are being pooled together is what gives the county their ability to zone this piece of property or the contiguous piece of property for upwards of 40 or 50 units. So that goes away. That absolutely goes away, and that open space is preserved now in perpetuity. Could somebody at some point say, yeah, we're going to plop a bunch of houses in between these two? They could try, but then you'd all be back, now wouldn't you?
Wow.
So, um, the, the, um, the, it, as I said before, it really preserves the neighborhood from the opening up, I believe, when you put those houses there. So we're left with the affordable housing component, which has been on again, off again, on again, now we're on. The Planning Commission back when, with all due respect to the prior Planning Commissioners, I think made a big mistake when they said that this was not an area appropriate for affordable housing. I don't know what was in their heads, but I respect the job that they do. I disagree with them. So now it's back to some extent, and I think that if we're going to have this development and we're going to have the bridge and the various mitig, one of the mitigations is the affordable housing. It's two additional units. It helps to flesh out that bottom terminus of Allen Road because it does make it less available to punch through. So I, um, I guess along with the other colleagues that I've heard, which are Brian, Roger, Marty, and Grant could go either way, will, will be willing to support alternative two as, as presented. And I appreciate everybody coming and all of the hard work that everybody's done to get here over the last eight years or so.
Was that a motion?
That will, could be a motion if, if Madam Mayor is accepting motions at this point.
Sure, go ahead.
Second.
In a second.
Well, Mr. Barnwell, why don't you go ahead then? I can't talk anymore.
You're right, Madam Mayor wants to make a few comments.
I haven't, I don't know how you could read my mind. You said, I already said what I was going to say, but that's okay.
You mentioned number two in the beginning.
I mentioned, uh, houses one, two, and three are a lot smaller than the houses in item, in alternate one, and I agree with those.
Oh, maybe I misunderstood.
I think it's good to have a little bit smaller houses, you could fit another one in there, and it's, it'll fit more in that neighborhood. The benefits of this, uh, they're, they're huge benefits, not only the pedestrian trail and, uh, access, um, the access to Las Pecitas will be good for the Ealing's Park connectivity, but I do want to point out, I don't think this developer is paying for a traffic light, or is he? Is he?
Yikes.
Never mind. Never mind, I didn't say that. Uh, I'm really glad you're paying for the traffic light because I know they're expensive. Um, and helping to pay for the roundabout, I know that, which is very wonderful, and I think that'll make a big deal of difference for people who are coming home from work at about 4:30 to 5:30 in the afternoon. It's really backed up, and I think it's going to, it'll make a big difference. Um, so the pedestrian pass around about, the, the open space and the creek restoration, that has to go through not only peer review, but also to the Creeks Committee, and I think the Creeks Committee is going to have to roll up their sleeves and really look at it. I'm not so sure revetment or, or that is the best. We've had that in the downtown area, and there's some problems with it, but we're going to leave that to the Creeks Committee. That's what they're supposed to do, and that's what they do well.
Madam Mayor, can I just clarify real, real quickly on, on the review of the creek restoration plan?
Please, that would be good.
Technically, the conditions of approval, it's in a couple places, lists a number of items, very detailed about the following elements that are to be included in the creek restoration plan.
Right.
And it technically leaves the approval with the Community Development Director and the Parks and Recreation Department with the Creeks Division, but I want to assure the council and the public that it's our full intent that we would involve the Creeks Committee in the review of that and take their input and certainly use them to a great extent, but technically, the way the conditions are written, the, the final approval is left with, uh, as we do with a lot of conditions of approval with either the Community Development Director and the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay, and I didn't see the, is the council in there at all?
For review of the creek restoration plan?
For review of the creeks.
No.
Okay. That's why I said I'll leave it to the Creeks Committee, but yeah, no, I'm glad you, you straightened that out, so that's good. I, I think this is going to be a fine improvement, and I'm glad that we're, uh, it looks like we have the votes to approve it. We have a motion from Mr. Barnwell.
I would like to, excuse me, as recommended in the staff report, make a motion that we introduce and adopt by reading of title-only ordinance initiating the annexation and a resolution of the council approving the lot line adjustment and a resolution of the council in favor of alternative number two, 25 homes. Second.
And the lot line adjustment, one is as written C in our report, because that also includes the findings.
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Uh, Mr. Wiley would like to chime in.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if you're prepared to call for the vote, but I, I had some comments on some changes we need in the resolution because of the different alternatives we looked at.
Oh, I noticed that on there.
Whenever you're ready for that.
Okay, go ahead, right now.
Because of the need to have a tentative map that really shows the partialization that the council finally decides, uh, and to have the conditions of approval reflect that, for example, if, if the council is inclined to go with the alternative that has two affordable units, we're going to suggest that the part of the resolution approving the tentative map, only that part, and I think that's, uh...
I was just looking.
At page 19 of the resolution, uh, it's Section 2D, the tentative map, would actually, we'd pull that out of the resolution and we'd bring that back at a later date, along with the conditions of approval, which will need to be revised. That'll allow the, the civil engineers to finalize the tentative map and to have the conditions of approval reflect the alternative suggested. And then one other point, there, there is an alternative, uh, and I believe this is for alternative two that requires a public street waiver, and if you do select alternative two, we will assume that that means the council wants this public street waiver section left in the resolution.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Part of the motion.
So it'd be without item, I think you said 2D, and then the conditions of approval for later, okay? And you said yes? And...
Yes, and Madam Mayor, can I just clarify, you know, with, under Charter Section 1507, to amend the general plan, to amend the zoning ordinance, essentially to annex property is a five-vote item.
Right.
That's always been at the adoption of an ordinance, introduction, it sort of gets an ordinance on the table. Today's the introduction date, so, but, uh, next week, if this ordinance comes back, I believe it's scheduled to come back for adoption next week, it will be a five-vote item next week.
Okay. We have Mr. Williams and, and Mr. House would like to speak. Mr. Williams.
So just a clarification, this is as, as it was written, this would not include eliminating the paved extended driveway, nor would it include conditions of approval forbidding future Allen Road access from other, um, potential developments adjacent to it.
Um, Mayor Bluman and Councilmember Williams, I, the driveway, I'd like to speak to a little bit. The driveway is 20 feet wide, which is not wide enough for, six, pardon me, 16 feet wide, even more so. It's not adequate to be used as public street access, and it was specifically designed that way to reduce the potential for changing that. In addition, it purposely ends the way it ends, once again, to help preclude that, and it's private. It is not public, so the city would have to take it at some point in the future if it were to become public, in which case they would have to compensate the landowners for it. Additionally, the connection between that driveway and Allen Road, which is both for bicycles and pedestrians, because we do have a private, or we have a pub, an easement, we're proposing an easement with the Homeowners Association that would be created out of this to provide bicycle access along the driveway and pedestrian access along the walk, the trail. And from the point of the end of the driveway to Allen Road, that is further reduced to 10 feet in width, so that once again, along with the bollards and everything else that we've talked about, the likelihood of it becoming a public road is extremely minimal, especially because it will all remain in private ownership.
Okay. And it's only 16 feet wide?
And it's only 16 feet wide for the driveway itself.
Okay. Mr. House, did you have something?
Yes, I do. Um, just to finish on that little piece, the, as I understand it, that's actually a pathway for bicycles that we're seeing depicted in brown up there, or tan, and there's actually emergency access pointing at private property that has some kind of an easement across it? What, please explain it, just so I do understand that. If a fire truck needed to get on site, what's the deal?
Yeah, um, I keep wanting to go back to chairs and commissioners, my apologies. Um, Mayor Bluman and Councilmember House, the, that is actually not a required, required emergency access. In fact, the Fire Department has made it very clear that they don't really want it. So we really should pull it from the description on either map because they have good access to the end of Allen Road, they have great access for, across the bridge from the other end.
Yeah.
And if there were an absolute emergency and people were trying to escape fire, I think they'd figure out a way to get past it in any case. So it's, but it is not a required access, and the Fire Department is not interested in it.
All right, I remember seeing something about that in a staff report before. Okay, well, then that needs to be changed because right now it indicates and looks like an, uh, a, an easement on the drawings and depictions. Um, one, um, one last piece, and this is to the applicant. Uh, there was a, a concern raised by the neighbors, and we've raised it here before, about the end of Allen Road and the size of the homes that are planned for there. Now, three are in this, in, in what's about to be approved, it appears, and, um, I believe that it would be only of just and fitting to offer some reassurance to them about the sizes of homes that you're planning at the end of Allen Road. Uh, they, somebody suggested 3,000 or 3,500 square foot homes, much larger than anything near the vicinity, and we talked about, uh, compatible design that would be, um, would be similar to what's being developed in that area now. So could you speak to that before we finish this out? I think it would be a very fitting way to finish this.
Um, actually, the specific plan speaks to it and limits the size of those units to 20, 2,500 square feet at the end of Allen Road.
The specific plan already does make that limitation, and I just want to be sure we're all on the same page before we leave this.
That's correct.
I know we discussed it before.
Excluding garages, so they're allowed to, that would, that would, they would be allowed. Here it is. Page 25 of 27 for the ordinance, Section 28.50.110. And B, it says residential structures in the zone located adjacent to Allen Road shall not exceed a total net square footage of 2,500 square feet excluding garages and accessory structures. And other, the other homes outside of this area are limited to 3,800 square feet. And other, the other homes outside of this area are limited to 3,800 square feet plus garages and accessory structures. So there is a substantially smaller limitation under the specific plan for these homes.
Okay, and as I watch the quizzle look on the applicant's representative's face, I want to be sure he's on board, but it sounds like that's where we are right now. Okay.
Chris Snyder has clarification.
Yeah, I'm looking at a Hatch and Parent memo dated November 21st that looked at alternative two. That's what we're looking at here. And alternative two has the three houses nearest Allen Road to a maximum of 1,950 square feet, the end of the long driveway, the three houses between 1,885 and 3,800, the 17 units that are not the affordables as 32 to 38, and the affordable units as 1,000, and then all houses, including a two-car garage. So that's according to this document here.
Yeah, and I think what we did in the ordinance was build in a little bit of flexibility.
Okay, well, it needs, I think, needs to be clarified between what was proposed here as an alternative is what we're looking at. I'm still looking against it, so I don't allow them to-
Madam Mayor, I'd very much like to know from the applicant what he intends, because really, if that is the intention, and that's the project description, that's good for us to approve that today. And that really is truly in keeping with what the neighbors' concerns were.
Okay. Mr. Americonner?
Madam Mayor, the action today is going to be on the ordinance that's before you. The ordinance before you is the one that the staff just quoted, and that supersedes the proposal that was included in our letter. We had some subsequent conversations with staff on this subject, and what your staff just read to you is, in fact, what it's going to control.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. The motion, I'm not going to repeat the whole motion, but it's to take out those two sections as Mr. Wiley pointed out.
As Mr. Wiley suggested, and alternative two.
Right.
And-
And remove the emergency access off of Allen Road.
And remove the emergency access, exactly.
Okay. Okay, anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
No.
Okay, 5-2, and thank you. We don't want to see you anymore. The end of the Allen Road people. Thank you. And I think we can adjourn. Is that true? Thank you, we're adjourned.